You're watching K-2.
Thank you and good evening. Welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Work Session Meeting for April 13th. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the School Board. I'm going to officially call our meeting to order and establish a quorum. We have Board Member Parker, Board Member Bohannon, of course myself, Board Member Cabbert Hayes, Board Member Kaplan, Board Member Crowley, and Board Member Jones present, and I see Board Member Bramer and Board Member Mott Singer. The next item on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
If there are further questions, further questions or discussion, please let it be known by aye for the approval of the agenda.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. The next agenda item is to start our work session, and I will turn it over to the Chair of Finance, Board Member Bramer.
Hi, if you can hear me. We have a few discussion items with Finance Committee and a couple of action items. Andrea Gillis will present the first discussion item.
Good evening, Board Members. Chair Woodbury, Superintendent McManus. Today we're going to review a few items for the Finance Committee. First item being the financial statements for February 28th of 2021. This first page is our balance sheet, just to show our total assets and liabilities as of February 28th, 2021, and the general fund and the capital replacement fund. The next page is our statement of revenues and expenditures, budget versus actual for the month ended February 28th, 2021, as compared to the same time last fiscal year. As you can see, we're at about the same percentage, 58.8% is in line with where we were last year as far as revenue received. And as far as expenditures, we're about, we're also in the ballpark at 64.5% of funds spent. This next page is a statement of revenue and expenditures for the Capital Outlay Fund. Right now, we're a little bit shorter than last year because our Capital Outlay Funds were shorter than last year because, if you remember, when we did the budget process, this year we moved a couple million dollars over from capital to the operating budget to help with the shortfall. But we've also spent less than we had last year. Next is a statement of net position for proprietary funds, child nutrition, and the daycare program. Right now, we still have about $5 million in net position as of right now in the child nutrition program, and we're in a deficit for the after-school daycare program, and this is due to the closure for COVID last year. This next statement is the statement of revenues and expenses and encumbrances for the Child Nutrition Fund. Right now, as of February 2021, we're at a $1.7 million deficit, and this is to be expected because, as you know, when we adopted our budget, we said we were going to have a deficit probably of between $4 and $5 million. So this is an anticipated deficit that we had planned to use their fund balance to cover. And then this next one is the statement of revenue expenditures for the daycare program. Right now, they are earning money this year, but the deficit is still there from last year, so we will try to make that up as much as possible in the current year. And that is it for the financials. Now we're going to go through budget amendments. So the very first budget amendment is the $2.9 million from the county that we've been talking about for the last few months. In December, the county commissioners approved the $2.9 million increase for us based on revenues that had come in better than projected. And these are the categories that those funds went into. If you notice, $977,000 went to this 8100 Purpose Code, that's charter schools. That is our share of what we got that has to go to charter schools. The next budget amendment is for federal grants. We had a $9,000 amendment for the IDEA Target Assistance Grant for EC preschool. We had a $140,000 decrease in our Title I funds, and this is probably due to a carryover adjustment once we got our final allotment. The next one is the ESERF digital curriculum funds. I'll have a presentation on ESERF later on that we'll talk about all these funds we got this year, but these, this is for digital curriculum. We also got ESERF funds for learning management system. And the next page is the other restricted funds. We received the grant from Winston-Salem Foundation for Professional Development for teacher assistance of about $418,000. We also got a grant from Winston-Salem Foundation for the BOE Board Governance Professional Development. We got $4,000 for grant for Math Manipulative Grant for Cook Elementary School, and then we received a grant from Curriculum Development in earning your street cred curriculum of $5,000. Next, we have some budget transfers, just first transfers, just between the early college funds moving from one purpose code to another. The next one is a summary of all the transfers that schools did moving funds between purpose codes. The next one is transferring supplies and materials to membership dues for Paisley IV. This one is for federal grants Title I adjustment, just making budget match actual, so we did like a little budget adjustment there. This is also another Title I adjustment, the Title I School Improvement Grant, also making adjustments to meet the visa program. And that is the end of the budget amendments. The next item on the agenda is the, I don't want to pull this up because it's a contract, but is the Dixon Hughes contract for our audit for next year. It's the same price as last year, it's $105,000. They need to get this contract approved as soon as possible so they can start our interim work, which will begin the first week of June, so we can get our audit on time. So we have to get, have this contract in place. So I'm asking for approval for that at the next board meeting. Alright, now for the good stuff. So this next presentation is a summary of COVID relief funds to date. So since the pandemic started, there have been lots of legislation at the state and federal level passed to provide funding to school districts to aid in the response to the pandemic. This presentation will break down the different acts of legislation passed as well as provide the fiscal impact to our district, as well as summarize how we spent the funds we got so far and the plans for future funding. So, in the spring, we received from the state $1.7 million supplemental funding. This funding was like an emergency influx of cash because we shut down suddenly, and they wanted to make sure that we had extra funds to do certain things. So we used these funds to keep paying our contracted custodial services to make sure that our schools stayed clean even though we weren't in school. But we wanted to make sure that schools were getting clean. We did a lot of de-cleaning, did a lot of bombing of schools to make sure that, you know, the virus was, whatever, you know, virus was there, it was done. So, and those funds expired in June of last year. So we got the money in April, had to spend it by June. This next chart is kind of a busy chart, but I copied this directly from the DPI website. I figured it was a very good visual. So it goes through the three different acts that the federal government passed to provide funding for school districts. So we had the CARES Act, which stands for Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, which was passed on March 27th of 2020. Now, this act provided funding, provided ESER funding, and we received ESER One funds. So you'll hear a lot about ESER. ESER is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So we received ESER One funds. That was brought to the board back in the spring. That $16.7 million we got, that was ESER One. We called it CARES Act, but it's CARES Act/ESER One. So in addition, we also received from the CARES Act GEAR funds. Now, some of the GEAR funds items were brought to you as well, but the GEAR stands for Governor's Emergency Education Relief Act. And then in addition to that, there was the CRF funds. The CARES Act also provided CRF funds to the district. The CRF funds were called, I mean, CRF stands for Coronavirus Relief Funds, and those are the funds that come directly from the state through DPI. So as you can see, in this part of the chart, it tells you all the different ESER funds we got. We have ESER One, which we already received. ESER Two and Three are the new pots of money that we're going to get this spring. GEAR One, we received. GEAR Two is a pot of money we're receiving in the future. CRF funds, we received. FRF funds are funds we will receive in the future. That was a little bit unknown right now because we haven't not received any documentation on FRF or any allocation amounts. Alright, next slide. Here's another slide. That's pretty helpful. So of all the different acts that we have and all the different funding pots that we have, it also provides the total number of funds that were received statewide, the pathway to the PSUs, which are school districts, the amount for the PSUs, total statewide amount, as well as the availability. So as you can see, the CRF funds initially were going to expire on December 31st, 2020. However, right after Christmas and right before New Year's, we got notification that those funds will expire a year later. However, we had already planned on spending our money because we had to get it spent by the 30th, so we had already spent all of our funds. So we pretty much have all of those funds spent. ESER One is what we call the CARES Act funds that we received, the $16.7 million. That money expires on September 30th, 2022. We have GEAR One funds that we received. Those funds expire September 30th, 2022. And now we have the CRSSA Act, which stands for Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. That was put into place December 27th, 2020, and those funds expire 9/30/23. And then the next one is the ARP Act, which stands for American Rescue Plan. That passed on March 11th, 2021, and that's where we received ESER Three funds. Those funds will expire September 30th, 2024. So as you can see, there are a lot of different pots of money that we have to manage and keep track of. And because these are all federal funds, there are lots of guidelines and fiscal monitoring that will be done to make sure that we spend the money in the appropriate way. So the Coronavirus Relief Funds, those funds cannot be used to account for revenue shortfalls, can only be used for necessary expenditures incurred during the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, may not be used for expenses that have been or will be reimbursed by any other federal program. And like I said before, those funds expired December 31st, 2021. However, because they extended the date at the last minute, we had already spent all of our money. So here's a summary of what we, what we received in Corona, CRF funds, what the use was, and how we used it. So the CRF funds came through the state, and they came in different buckets. And those buckets were, had specific guidelines and uses around them. So the first pot of money was summer learning program. We got $1.3 million. It was to provide, actually, this is what we spent because we got, the deposit money that we received may be a little bit different because when the money was about to expire, DPI allowed us to transfer between CRF funds so that we could utilize all the funds. Because we initially got 2.7 in summer school money and summer program money, but we only spent a million three. And because the money was going to expire, they said, well, you can transfer it and spend it however you need to spend it. So that's what happened. So these amounts here that I'm showing you is what we actually spent because we did transfers in between these funds, which the DPI allowed us to do. So, we used the funds for the summer jumpstart program, which was presented to the board and approved in July of 2020. Next, we have the CRF School Health Support Funds. We received, we actually wound up allocating $157,349 to this pot of money. We used that to fund, to hire nurse extenders and contact tracers. We received non-digital resource funds, $7,549. We used that to provide some non-digital instructional resources to students. We also received student computer and device funds. We wound up spending $2.4 million, and that was funds to provide student laptops for remote learning. We also received $2.5 for school nutrition. Those funds were used to provide meals during school closure, and those funds actually came in earlier. It came in before the end of the fiscal year in June. So we used that money to help deliver meals in the spring and the summer and the fall while school was closed. The next pot of money is the personnel, computers, and devices, and we used $839,000 to purchase devices for teachers and support staff at schools.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
For the, for the funds used for the healthcare support to hire the extenders, nurse extenders, how, how long will, I guess, how, how long do we have on having them on?
That contract, the Aviana contract, it was brought to the board, and it's through June 30th.
So it's through the end of this school year?
Yes, yes. But we, we use a portion of it, we, we applied a portion of that contract to these funds, but we had the GEAR funds that we used, that is a bigger pot to pay this, because obviously $157,000 doesn't go a long way, but we wanted to pay, use what we could with this pot of money and then put the rest on the GEAR funds.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll see that again when the GEAR funds presentation. Alright, next, there was home and community Wi-Fi, $386,000. We used these funds to provide mobile and community Wi-Fi during school closure. I don't know if you remember Kevin presented, putting mobile, we put Wi-Fi on buses as well as outside of our schools and neighborhoods so that the community could get Wi-Fi. Next, we received $211,000 for the Learning Management System. We used this to purchase campus licenses for remote instruction. We also received $1.4 million for Exceptional Children Funds. We used these funds to provide additional EC resources to students and teachers. We also received $128,000 in cybersecurity funds, and these funds were used to enhance the current cybersecurity platform. And we had about $1.5 million in protective personal equipment, and we used that to purchase PPE for staff and students. And PPE could mean not just masks and other things, but we also bought, you know, the dividers and all that kind of stuff with this money as well. So in total, we got $10.9 million in CRF funds that we have spent. Next, we have the ESER One funds. So the first pot, first line you see is the ESER One Emergency Relief Fund. That was what we would call it, the CARES Act funds when we first got it. It was the $16.8 million. We presented that to the board, and we used that to provide PPE, additional cleaning app facilities, technology, digital resources, the CARES teams, the remote learning centers, and virtual academy. So we used these funds to provide all those things. The next pot of money is the digital curricula, $386,000. We just got that money recently. That was in the budget amendments, and that will be used to provide content for students, digital content for students. We also received another $211,000 for learning management systems. As you, as you know, we got state funds for that, and we also got federal. So we're going to hold this money and use that for campus for next year, so that'll give us campus, you know, for two years. We also received more, $23,000 in more EC grants. Those funds will also be used to provide EC resources, additional EC resources to students and teachers. And finally, we have the $80 million. That was the ICARES grant that Andy Kraft presented to you, that we use in that to partner with local agencies to provide ICARES tutors for nine schools. So in total, ESER One funds, we received $18.3 million. And we still have some of that money left to spend, but you haven't seen nothing yet. Okay. So that's ESER One. We also received the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund, GEAR funds. So the first pot was the Student Health Support of 1.25. That was the rest of the money we used to hire the nurse extenders and the contact tracer. So that's where the bulk of that money is coming from for that contract. We also received $776,000 for Supplemental and Social Services, and I don't know if you remember or not, but Jevlin brought forth a contract for EdCor tutors, for us to hire these EdCor tutors. Well, not a contract, but an agreement. We hired EdCor tutors to help with the tutoring. And we got a total of $2 million in GEAR funds. Alright, so now we're going to talk about the next pot of money we got, that we're going to get actually, ESER Two and ESER Three. ESER Two was, came from the CRSSA Act in December. ESER Three is provided for by the ARP Act that just passed in March. So, "The funds may be used in a wide variety of ways to assist districts in responding to the COVID pandemic, including educational technology, sanitizing cleaning facilities, preparing and improving facilities to reduce the risk of transmission, developing processes and procedures to improve preparedness and response efforts, planning and implementing activities during long-term closures, providing mental health services and supports, planning and implementing activities related to summer learning, after-school programs, and addressing learning loss." The ESER Two funds expire September 30th, 2023. ESER Three funds expire September 30th, 2024. So, we recently received our allotment. We will get $66 million in ESER Two funds. Like I said, it's a broad use. ESER Two and ESER Three are pretty much interchangeable. ESER Three has one caveat that says 20% must be used to address learning loss. Our estimated ESER Three allotment is 149. And I did this presentation last week, but we actually got our allotment yesterday. It's 148 point something, so I was close. So we got about $215 million in ESER Two and Three funds coming our way. Yeah. So, and these funds, like, you know, the total amount, these funds expire in 2023 and 2024, but they have to be used for these specific things related to learning loss. So the grant deadline is May 6th, so it's a very quick turnaround. And right now, the district is planning to get stakeholder feedback from, you know, our stakeholders quickly as possible so that we can get our plan approved. So, does anybody have any questions on this?
Chair Woodbury, could you please let me know if anyone does, because I cannot see anyone at the, or there itself. I can just see the virtual hands.
Okay, thank you.
So I will say one more thing. There are some things that we had, that Superintendent McManus and executive team have, wanted to spend these funds on, and you'll see those things tonight, things that we know that we cannot wait for, like technology, because there's a shortage of Chromebooks across the country. So we have to bring these things forth now, but we plan on using ESER funds for those, but it's not, it's just a small chunk of the ESER funds, not all of it. But we will be bringing some things forward tonight that we just can't wait on, like technology, curriculum resources, because it takes a while to get those. We want to have those in August, when school starts, the RFP that Jevlin's going to bring forth, because we have to get started on that as well. So some things are urgent, so we want to hurry up and try to get those approved tonight. We'll approve this month.
So are we coming up with an overall budget for this money?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I just-
We have to do an application. It has to be detailed, by budget code. We have to submit it to DPI. They approve it, and then we get our funds.
When, when does that have to be submitted by?
May 6th.
What?
Yeah, quick turnaround. If we're going to do it by May 6th, we have to wait till the fall to get our money. So if we want our money now, we have to do it by May 6th. Quick turnaround.
Is it, is the budget, but it's a budget. It doesn't have to be specific?
Right. Yeah, well, we have to make sure we, we have to put, we have to do a needs assessment and application. So it does have to be sort of specific, like what we're planning on with the money. We have to make sure that it ties to the goals of these funds, like the use of these funds. It has to tie to COVID, or, you know, COVID-type expenditures or response to COVID. But yeah, quick turnaround, May 6th. So that's why we really don't, we don't have a lot of time for stakeholder input, but we do want to try to get as much as we can so we can get our grant submitted. But, you know, we have, we have met and come up with some ideas, and some of the things we know we want to do specifically are being brought forth tonight.
And so when you mentioned stakeholders, who, what are the groups, who are the people that you're-
I mean, executive team, principals, school-based staff, you guys. That's why I wanted to present this tonight, because I wanted to make sure, you know, this all really just came out in the last few weeks. So wanted to make sure we got it on the agenda, so if you have any thoughts or ideas, we can get that on.
I have one question going way back to the, to your actual first part. On the Capital Outlay, on the expenditures and encumbrances, there was a system-wide pupil support services that we spent money last year for. I was wondering, was that COVID-related, and we haven't spent any, like, I guess, this year?
Is it, is it in the financial statements?
Yes, uh-huh.
What page is it on?
Oh, gosh. Let's see, three?
Okay, system-wide pupil support. Yeah, we probably haven't spent anything on that yet. It's like a couple thousand dollars?
Yes.
We didn't really spend anything last year. The last year, we got a credit, so I think it's just something we budget and maybe we don't necessarily always spend it.
Okay. I was just wondering. I didn't know whether that was some kind of extra money we always got or what, what that was. So, okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions on the ESER funds?
No, I have just some thoughts around, but I think I'll probably bring that up with Kevin and Jevlin in their presentation, but just that I know some of this, this funding will, will launch certain programs or cover us for certain years, but then, you know, as a district, just with those two contracts that we're going to talk about, that's about almost $6 million in today's dollars. You know, how do we anticipate that we will pay for that once this funding is no longer there? So we can talk about that?
Yeah, I can answer that. As far as technology goes, we will try to, you know, in years before, we had like the budget shortage. There, there was a technology budget from the county that came over, you know, in capital funds. I'm trying to reinstate that with any increases that we get from the county, as well as trying to tighten up other people's budgets to make sure that we have that money available to, to do the technology. Jevlin's program is a pilot. We're going to pilot it. And so, you know, we have to figure out, if we do like it, if it does work, how are we going to pay for it? But right now, we just want to pilot it, kind of we have this funding available, because we definitely want to make sure we have enough subs available, just because, you know, it's been very hard this year trying to get subs.
Thank you for explaining what all those letters mean. I get totally confused every time, and so thank you for-
I was confused. I was confused myself until I found this little, you know, trusty little chart, and I was like, okay, this kind of helps explain it a little bit, but it's, it's so many different pots of money. So you can imagine how my head is spinning right now.
Yeah.
You know, not just with the operating budget, our regular budget, our state and federal funds, but, you know, all of this money here that we have, you know, to follow certain guidelines, we have certain deadlines. It's going to be monitored. They have to make sure that we follow, you know, federal uniform guidance requirements, which, you know, for all federal funds, we have to make sure that purchases over $10,000 have to either have three quotes, or you have to get a waiver. Anything over, I think, $90,000 will need a formal bid, or you can get a waiver. Because they've been doing a lot of waivers just because a lot of this money we've been getting has been, you know, at the last minute. We need it right away. We really don't have time to do RFPs, but, you know, obviously we want to do this one because this is so important. And like the technology, we're going to use state contract for that, but we would get a waiver.
One question I had. Do they ever give you an extension on anything, or is it just cut and dry? One question I had. Do they ever give you an extension on anything or is it just cut and dry?
I mean, you gotta spend it now. No, we have, we have three years to spend some of this money.
Yeah.
Like, you know, they gave us, they've given us a while to spend it, but I mean, it's a significant amount of money to spend for us because, you know, that's almost double our county budget. So, it's daunting, but, you know, we have to make sure we, we don't want to spend it all. We're not going to spend it all in one year. We have to make sure we spread it out over the years. Like, obviously, we want to pay for summer school, more so than we've done in the past. We're going to have, you know, very extensive summer schools for the next three summers. So, we will be paying for those types of things.
Right, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep. So, like the last page of the presentation says, initiatives and things that we do will be coming, bringing to the board as they, as we decide. We'll be bringing things to the board. So, I just wanted to give you a bird's eye view of what's coming.
Thank you so much for everything you did.
Well, no worries. Thank you.
All right.
And Kevin Smith, Cheryl's up next, sorry, Kevin, Cheryl's up next with the information technology.
Thank you, Ms. Bremer, and good evening, board members and Ms. McManus. Wanted to bring a plan to you tonight around our student devices. Let me get this moving here right quick so I can think. You know, as we, as we rolled into last spring and we closed school in a hurry, we deployed just over 38,000 Chromebooks in about a two-week period. And those devices are still out there with our students, and that was very reactive, something we had to do. And I think we did a good job of getting our students what they needed at the time, and we're supporting them now. Those, those devices are still with our students even a year later. They're still, they're still in those hands. But as we go forward, I think it's important that we, we develop more of a sustainable program for, for our student devices, and that's what I want to bring to you tonight as we go forward. And this, this does have a financial component, obviously, it's in Finance Committee, but this is really an instructional program. I want to make sure that our students have the tools they need to, to support the instructional goals from Nicolette's group and from our teachers. So, why one-to-one? So, when we talk about one-to-one computing, there's a lot of research out there. It promotes digital citizenship. It creates autonomy and creates that pathway for personalization in classroom, improves motivation and engagement. I don't know if they did that study now after a year of kids being online all the time, if the engagement would be as high as it is, but that's yet to be seen. I know with my boys at home, that's, that's probably a question mark. But so, how will we use these Chromebooks? Access to our cloud-based systems such as Google, Office 365, our online textbooks, Discovery Ed. Of course, our core of our learning is our Canvas platform, which is all digital, of course. Our virtual classroom platform, Zoom and Teams, that's been our mainstay this year. And that's, that was a COVID remote learning platform, but, you know, we will continue to use those platforms going forward even when we're in school. There'll be, there'll be reasons to use that. Online assessments, testing. So, there's lots of reasons for these devices to be in our students' hands. So, I've always had it, personally, I've wanted us to get on a four-year lifecycle with our, with our devices. I've worked with my team to develop this, this strategy. So, what we wanted to do is K2, before the remote learning hit us and we had to close, we really didn't have the intent to issue devices on a one-to-one carry home for K2. So, we're going to pull that back, and our K2 kids will use devices in the classrooms, and we will not send those home. And Nicolette and Tina and Dr. Lupton and I have talked about that. We feel like that's the best instructional use for those devices with that age group. But all students, grades 3 through 12, will be issued a Chromebook device that they will carry to and from school each day. And really, the premise of this, this lifecycle flow is every year, and I'm going to show you an animation that shows this, we purchase for 3rd, 6th, and 9th grade. So, an incoming 3rd grader gets a new device. They keep it till the end of 5th grade. And then they get a new one at 6th grade. They keep it till the end of 8th grade. Then they get a new one at 9th grade, and they keep it through the 12th grade. That keeps all of our devices on a three-year, three-year, and a four-year schedule. And that'll, that'll, that'll show itself here just a little more clearly to you in just a moment. So, we're going to take a deep breath this summer. We're going to recollect everything that's out there. Not going to talk about hotspots tonight, but we are going to collect those as well. And we are going to redistribute hotspots next year in, in more of an application process for our, for our students that need connectivity. So, we're going to continue that as well, and we may, we can talk about that at another board meeting as we get closer. We're going to try to pull everything back. We're going to clean and sanitize. We're going to figure out what our loss and our damage is, because we know that's out there. We know we're repairing things today. Every day, we have about 30 come into our depot, which is downstairs in this building, that we swap out, we repair. So, we've got a lot of that happening that we know we've got to recover from. And we'll repair that stock, those 38,000-plus for redistribution in the, in the fall. So, here's what it's going to look like. So, we decided to color-code our groups, although these things, our devices will be checked out to the students by serial number in our asset management system. But to keep them grouped, we're going to color-code them with a label and a, kind of a permanent painter pen color on the dot on the bottom of them so we know which group they're in. So, our gold group, as Andrea mentioned earlier, we purchased 13,500 devices this year. We actually ordered them last summer in 2020. They did not arrive until January of '21 because of all the manufacturing delays. So, those are here, and they are used in our schools, so that was the purchase with that first round of COVID relief dollars that she mentioned. So, we've got that batch that we have now. In addition to that, I just mentioned all the ones we're going to pull back. So, that's going to be our silver group. These are the devices that are out there now, 38,000-plus that we're going to pull back, and that will be labeled our silver group. And then, we're ready to purchase our blue group, which will be this year's purchase going into the fall. And once we do that, this is what will stage us up to, to deploy a device to all these grade levels going into August of this year. So, our gold group, which is, are in the buildings now, will deploy those to our 4th, 7th, and 10th graders. Our silver group, which again, keep in mind, that's all the ones we're pulling back. We're going to distribute those to 5th, 8th, 11th, and 12th grades and into the K2 classrooms. So, we'll take all those devices and put them into those grade levels. 5th, 8th, and 11th and 12th will be one-to-one. We have the numbers to do that. And of course, our blue group is our first batch of 3rd, 6th, and 9th. So, that'll set the stage for this year's deployment. Now, that's a ton of work to get that done over the summer. We've got to pull all that back, got to get the new ones in, get all that out. And we're staffing up to get that done and make that happen this summer. And then, going into '22, you will see this flow. Every year, we purchase that same 13,500, which is the number we need for 3rd, 6th, and 9th grade. We bring those in. All the other grade levels shift forward. So, what was 4th, 7th, and 10th, that gold group is now staying with the 5th, 8th, and 11th graders. Now, as they moved up, they keep their device. Most likely, we may just leave it with them in the summer. Summers just seem really short. It's just a lot of work to pull all that back, so they're going to issue a device and keep it. Our silver group, we will surplus some of that 38,000 at that point, because we've got two new groups already started. But we'll, we'll continue to support K2 and 12th grade with that group. The blue group, which started in 3rd, 6th, and 9th, is now 4th, 7th, and 10th, moving forward. And then, of course, the green group is our 3rd, 6th, and 9th. And I'll move quickly through this. It's similar, but it changes just a little when we get to the end of the lifecycle. Then we bring in our red group, same process. Everything moves forward. Now, at this point, our gold group is at their end of their, going into their fourth year. We're going to keep those for 12th grade, 4,200 or so. But then, 5th and 8th grade, the ones that are coming off of 5th and 8th grade in gold, that'll be their fourth year. They'll go into K2. So, they spend their fourth year in K2 every year. So, every time a 5th grader turns in their device, an 8th grader, those immediately go into K2, which is their fourth year. So, our K2 are getting four-year-old machines, but that's the worst they're getting. So, every year, they get a four-year-old machine, and that is coming off of 5th and 8th grade. And everything else, kind of talked through my animation there, but everything's just moving forward with the grade levels. And then we bring in purple. And this, 2024, will complete our first lifecycle to where at that point, all the gold, which are now sitting in 12th grade and in K2, are surplus because they're end of life, because they just reached their four years of age. But a new group went down to K2, and all the other groups got their new ones and moving forward. So, that's kind of the flow, and I can stop right there just for a moment. I just have just a couple more slides. But that's the lifecycle flow that I think will sustain us, and that gives us new devices. Our students, really our students on a three-year program unless you're K2 and 12th graders. Your K2 has a four-year-old machine, and a 12th grader keeps a machine for years. They had it when it was 1, 2, 3, but they keep it the fourth year. All the other grade levels get refreshed after three years, which I think is wonderful.
Mr. Cheryl, will the devices be taken up at the end of the year just to?
Yeah, we've debated that a little bit. We feel like we're going to leave them with them for their, for their three-year period and keep them in the, let them keep them in the summer. There's so many summer programs. We spent an enormous amount of time pulling that back in just to redistribute to programs. And then, by the time you turn around, it's 1st of August, and we're redistributing it again. So, we're still kind of debating that, Chair Woodbury, and we just got to think through. We may run a year of not collecting and to see what our summer loss and damage looks like to see if we might need to reevaluate that. So, some things that are outstanding that we need to do still with this plan is we've got to work on our new parent-student agreement, a damage and loss fee schedule. We need our parents and our students to have a little skin in the game. We've not been successful at all really this year on enforcing any charges. We've had a lot, we've had loss. We've had, we've had a family move to Florida and took five Chromebooks with them, and we never saw them again. Still trying to get those back with the family over at Iverham. But things like that, this has just been a crazy year about managing this, and I think if we put some more structure around, we just did a lot of things in a hurry. We got this done in a hurry last spring, and we've got to put some more structure around our damage and loss and fee schedule. And Deanna, I've talked about a policy update. It'll probably take some policy updates for these things to make sure our parents know that they're being held accountable for loss and damage. And the funding, yes, as Ms. Jones, as you mentioned, we do need to find a way to sustain this. But good news is, we've got a four-year sustained plan with the funding that Andrea shared with us. So, 3.5 million is what it costs to purchase 13,500 devices every year. They're roughly $212 apiece. That will fluctuate over time, but it's right around that 2 to 2.15. So, it's, it is a consumable. It's not something we want to keep 10 years. I mean, so four years is about the life of something like that, and it's a $200 device. So, our SR funds, all the ones that Andrea described, will carry us through the 2024, 25 school year. And then, our hope is, as that time goes on, we start developing that funding source to sustain this. I'm encouraged about this because it feels, you know, I've been here 15 years, and it's every year we're chasing this, this problem, trying to find funding and devices for our kids. And this gives us a sustainable program that we, if we put in place and we follow, follow the script that I think we've laid out here that, that will work, then our students, we're not always wondering, well, do they have enough Chromebooks for testing? Do they have enough for this? We got to find money for this and that. We can, we can, we can allow our schools to stop spending Title I money on, on devices. The PTAs can quit spending their money on it as well, because this is a district-funded, sustainable plan on a schedule that we, we know what it costs, and we just go forward. So, that's what I have for you, and I hope it made sense.
Does this include devices for staff?
This does not. Our staff are already on a four-year schedule now. The $839,000 that she mentioned is a, is an annual payment. Our staff just received new laptops this year, and they're on a four-year lease schedule. So, every year, we're paying $840,000 for that, and in four years, we've got to do that again, too. So, that does not include these funds. That's outside of these funds. So, you're talking whatever 840 plus 3.5 is for staff and students would be those two, two amounts.
Okay. And how about like a, a new student moving in in 7th grade? How do you know which color code they get, if they're coming in the middle of the cycle or?
Well, if they're 7th grader, we would put them on, you know, what the other 7th graders have. We'd put them on that cycle. And we actually need about $12,800, about the average for the three-grade level. So, 13,5 gives us that flexibility to handle students that are incoming and leaving.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask next, is what's your buffer for growth?
You've got roughly 4,000 to 4,200 kids in a grade level is what we've got. Other questions?
I would just say, yeah, thank you. It's a, I mean, it's a solid plan. I know, you know, since I've been here, that's something that I, we've talked about a lot around trying to put a device in every student's hand. And so, it's great that we have the opportunity to use these funds this way, and hopefully, this will definitely help, help our students in their learning. And it gives us time to have that conversation with our, with our county around what, what would that look like to try to put that technology piece in there? I just, I would just encourage, we have those conversations now so that they can prepare as well. I mean, I know at one time, they had funding for technology, but it was really to kind of jumpstart our program, if I remember.
We've had Band-Aid-type funding.
Right.
Like, we get ourselves such in a hole, and then the county will say, okay, well, here's $2 million to help you out. We need sustainable, sustainable funding to have our students on what they need.
Yeah, I think it's a great plan. Again, I would just encourage that we really have those conversations with the county and maybe, you know, be able to show them the next time that we are, you know, asking for, for, talk about that funding formula and, and kind of show some data points where this one-on-one device for our students has, has helped in the, in the learning loss and then just in learning in general. I'm sure they will help us any way they can.
And one side item to all this, out of that 215 million, and Andrea, don't throw something at me, but we're, one of the things on our wish list is to spend some one-time money to buy cases, carrying cases for these that are basically, the Chromebook stays in the case. They just open the bag, and it stays in there. And those can be reused year to year. So, we're hoping to do some one-time funding to put all of these in that type of case that will recycle each year to help protect and prevent some of that damage and loss. Other questions?
So, because the machines, as far as like laptops kind of go, like, they're relatively cheap. So, when, can you talk a little bit about what sort of ongoing maintenance looks like? Like, if we, you know, so we're spending this money so that, you know, children can have a device. If there's something wrong with the device, do we just replace the device or like? And what does that look like in terms of like what staff is doing to kind of, is there an additional responsibility on staff to try to maintain this? Because, you know, right now, it seems like, like you said, what we did this year was kind of brand-new sort of for long-term sustainability. What are we talking in terms of?
Well, okay, a couple things. So, these devices will have a three-year warranty, manufacturer warranty. What we're seeing most are broken keyboards and broken screens. It's not really that the devices, the kids are breaking keys off the keyboards and, and from droppage, they're breaking the corners of the screen. So, we'll repair those up to a, to a level that if a, if a screen and a keyboard are broken on the same device, it's just about not worth fixing it. It's about, it's about the cost of the machine to fix it. So, I've got, our technical team, we do, we have a repair process that we can maintain them that way. But yeah, based on that fee schedule and loss schedule, then we've got to figure out with our policies, if, if little Johnny loses his Chromebook, he may become a day user. He doesn't get to take another one home. He gets to use one that's at school unless they pay the replacement cost to be issued a new one. Those are the kind of things that we need to work out this spring and summer before we launch the plan. And as far as teachers go, it's just really about just the classroom management of, of the devices and how they intend to incorporate those into the instructional day. My hope is that they're not using them all day long at school. That's not what they're for. There's a place for them in the classroom when the instruction calls for it. But this gives us the opportunity for kids to, to standardize. They use the same device at school that they use at home, and they can, they can extend that learning outside of the walls. But by no means am I promoting that they come in, they open a Chromebook, and they jump on Canvas and Zoom and Teams all day. That's not what this is about. This is about providing that, that device that they need to do things outside of the classroom.
Okay. And so, at the end of the four-year lifecycle, we recycled them. What do we do?
Oh, great point. I'm sorry. Thank you for saying that, Alex. We, we have a couple surplus companies that bid on our devices. The last time we sold Chromebooks was about two years ago, and I was able to get $39 for each one. So, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars of, of surplus money that'll cycle back into this program that my hope is we'll probably use that for repair parts and things like that. So, we will sell them as surplus. They're not just disposable at that point. They do have a little bit of value left at that four-year mark.
Thank you.
I was going to ask if we're going to keep a small section of those available as like a refurbished unit so that as part of our policy might be that they get a refurbished unit that's on the same scale as they had, so they're not trying to get a newer model by claiming something is wrong? But they always get the same one, that batch?
That's a great idea. We could definitely do that. Keep some of the surplus back for those replacements and loaners.
Kevin, what is the replacement cost for a family?
Well, full replacement is about $216 as it sits today. Google changed their licensing model. It has a Google license with it. Some of that's fluctuating. So, many, it's going to be from 200 to 230 is about what they are.
So, is there, is there any kind of insurance that parents can pay for that allows if it is lost or damaged, that is way less than $216?
I'm so glad you brought that up, too. I was absent-minded not to put that on the slide. We're looking into several insurance programs, and my initial thought on that is to make that available to the parents and let them opt-in on themselves instead of us buying the insurance and giving it to them. But let them, if they want to purchase that insurance, we, here's the program. Here's how you enroll. But that would be on the parent to do that, is my initial thought. But yes, we're hoping to, to make that available as well and for a nominal fee. And we kicked around the idea, Deanna and I talked about it a little bit, about a technology fee just across the board as, as other, other programs have fees. But I'm just not so sure that works that well with our Title I schools and how we would figure that out. So, we're still thinking through. Those are some of the outstanding things we've got to decide as we build our program. But, you know, a $20 annual fee, we'd put a million dollars into this program. But so, there's, those are some things we may bring back to you as we get a little further down the road on, on our, on our launch. I wanted to bring it tonight because we've got to get the fall order going, because there's a four- to six-month delay on receiving anything. So, we've got to be proactive about getting our devices here, especially right now with the COVID manufacturing delays.
Okay, the, the last question I have is around, as a district, do we have like a how-to-care-for-your-device kind of curriculum that teachers?
Yes, we do. We've actually made a bunch of videos this year of how do- We've actually made a bunch of videos this year of how to make, to care for your, for your Chromebook, the do's and don'ts, best practices. We've got a whole library of things that we put out there for our, for our families this, this past year.
I think that those are something that insurance companies, you know, definitely look at as it relates to insuring the.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just have one more. Also, at the end of that four-year cycle for our high school students, I know at that time that the device is old.
Four years, yeah.
Yeah, you know, but for, for some students, that may be what they need to, to move forward. So I mean, it looks like we're getting $39 roughly the last time we did it. And could we think about in the policy that if a student wants to take that device with them, that we, we gift it to them? Or, you know, something that, that we could do? I mean, I, I would rather see our students be able to take that device with them.
Yeah.
Than, than us get the $39.
I mean, I would lean on Deanna on the legal side of that, but I love that idea.
Right, I mean, just, just as, I mean, if we're, I know we, we have to craft something and, and I would just like to see something like that in there.
There might be a federal funding issue with that.
Can we, like a dollar? Okay.
But to your point, at that point, we are going to surplus them and get what we can. So could we do something that would benefit our outgoing seniors? That'd be something definitely to look into.
Thank you.
Right. Maybe there's some nominal fee we could charge and, and meet the federal guidelines and let our seniors have them as they, as they leave us. That would be, that would be a great, I'd love that idea.
That'd be great.
So just, just two quick questions. So the first is, do we, do we track these? Are these trackable?
They are not trackable because they don't have an OS in them that's trackable. We do have, I mean, obviously we know which student has them and we, we can see when they're logged in. We can know that, that what groups of kids have logged in and have not. We can see when they're online. But if one's reported stolen, I can't tell you that it's down at Cook's Flea Market. No, we don't have that tracking ability on these.
Okay. And then the second thing, just for, just so I understand, the difference between a Chromebook and like a regular laptop is that the Chromebook is really for, so it's kind of web-based. It doesn't have a whole lot of memory or a large, large hard drive?
Absolutely. It is completely a web-based machine. If you think about the things that our students do, there's really hardly anything that they're doing today that's not a web-based application. Canvas, Discovery Ed, Google Drive, Office 365, their email, everything's web-based. So that's just where we are with the technology. They can't install Adobe Professional on it, like, like to your point. You can't install programs on it. It is a web-based machine without a hard drive in it. And it, it, it's the standard for K-12 education. It's what most districts are using. We do have a pretty large fleet of iPads in our K-2 that will stay in those schools, too. So we are using iPads in those classrooms and I failed to mention that. So our K-2 kids will have a mix of iPads and Chromebooks. All right. Thank you so much. Yes, line.
Kevin, I don't have a question. I just want to say it's amazing to me to sit here and to hear what all we're doing, you know, in this pandemic when we've never done anything like this before, never thought that we would be giving out these iPads to all our students. And it's remarkable to me the way this has been done and the way our school system is handled.
Absolutely. If you think about what we've done with our bond technology, what we've done with our classroom, our classroom technology, sound enhancement, the Fermatian active panels, now we've got our devices for our kids. And the students that need connectivity are going to have that next year as well. We've, we've really come a long way.
Yeah, well, I just want to tell you thank you. I, I can't imagine something like this, you know, coming, coming on like it did so sudden and then being to the place that we are now.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have just one request and, and that is, could we make sure we go back and survey the K-2 teachers to make sure that using four-year-old devices with those kids isn't, you know, causing havoc in their classrooms?
Absolutely. I mean, I'll tell you, they're using five-year-old devices today, so.
Okay.
That, that silver group that I'm going to surplus next year, they're already past four years.
When you're already little and then the thing's glitchy, you know, that can just be really hard on.
The good news is the Chromebook doesn't take a lot of resources to run and so absolutely can do that.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. And they're only going to keep them that one year, keep in mind, too. But it is going to be four years old. It'd be their fourth year when they get it. But great point. All right. Thank you so much. Jevon, let me get your thing running here.
And next we have a gentleman, Bonner Reed, to discuss substitute teacher staffing and management vendor.
Hey, good evening, Superintendent McManus, Chairperson Woodbury and all the board members. I'm excited to share this information with you about embarking on a substitute management system. So let's start with the rationale for even looking at a substitute management system. As you know, we've been, there's been a decrease in substitute teacher fill rates during 2020 and '21 this year. And that's because of COVID-19. So we're seeking approval to begin the RFP process. I have to say, we didn't have a super, super high fill rate before this. So the need was already there. It's just been exasperated by COVID-19. So the expected outcomes of looking at a substitute teacher staffing management system, we're going to focus on teachers first. Could this expand to other substitute roles that we need? Potentially, but we want to focus on the teachers. The main reason is to substantially increase substitute teacher fill rate. Right now, we're in the 60 to 70% range and our target is to get this up to 98%. And according to our research coming into this before even asking for this RFP, that that's actually feasible. We want to recruit and retain highly-trained substitute teachers. We want to improve the process for recruiting and retaining these substitute teachers. We want to provide customized recruitment for our substitute teachers and provide additional training and support for the schools. And increase substitute teacher effectiveness as a result of pouring this all into our substitute teachers and standardize the substitute teacher experience across West Salem, Forsyth County schools. So some of this is going to be handled by the substitute management system. Probably the first couple of bullets, but then when we get down to increasing their effectiveness, standardizing the experience, that's really using our existing resources. Moving those resources to focus on those areas and letting the management system more so focus on the fill rate and getting the substitutes in place. So I know this is a very busy slide, but these are all the services that substitute management systems can provide. You know, ranging from, you know, how we hire, some of our background check, all of those type of services. And that's why we're interested in this and will allow us to focus on some other areas. Substitute management systems are used at a variety of different districts across North Carolina, both large and small. And they've had success in utilizing them. The benefits to our substitute teachers is that they'll have access to health benefits. They'll be paid weekly. These management systems will actually take over the payroll and, and save some time from our finance team as well. They'll be eligible for bonuses. You know that we exhausted all types of creative ways this year, including bonuses. So we would maintain that bonus, some type of bonus structure for them. They'd have monthly incentives, giveaways, gift cards or other things that these management systems do. They'd also do long-term substitute teachers, which we currently do and be able to move that over with them. They, some of the added things are they have a substitute teacher appreciation event, substitute teacher of the month. They evaluate and provide feedback to the subs and have training on content, classroom management and teaching strategies for the subs. Some testimonials during our, our research was that, you know, we even looked across the US, not just in North Carolina, but mostly focused on North Carolina. Philadelphia, we would certainly contract this service. Stanley County, prior to the substitute system, they had 83 to 95. Now they're at 99%. Rowan, being 100% pleased. And the thing about Rowan that I was like, this is good to hear, that the process to move over to it was smooth despite being in the middle of the pandemic. I have to say, that was my biggest worry to try to do this in the middle. That's why we didn't look at this sooner. Is this going to be a smooth process? I don't want it to be painful for schools or for HR, for anybody involved. And then CMS, they had a substitute management system starting in 2015 with their Title I schools. And when it came time to think about it, prior to that, they had about a 60% fill rate. And after they worked through with getting this management system, they asked their Title I principals and they all voted to say, continue to use the substitute management system. It's working for us. So in terms of impact on cost, the upcharge is typically around 30% per substitute. Yet there's also some cost savings in that they would be doing the drug test, the frontline fee. Frontline is where people put in the system that they need a sub. The I-9 fee, background checks. So there's some savings in it, but the upcharge is 30%. In terms of that larger budget that you'll see for ESAR, it's about, we approximate about $1.4 million per year. And this is based on usage prior to, a full years of usage prior to COVID-19, which actually our absentee rate or subs use was way higher than it has been during COVID. Our fill rate was higher at that point because substitutes were more willing to come in and cover. So we, we wanted to use those years and look at that. And then we still wanted to think about COVID years, this COVID year, because we anticipate these next few years to be kind of a hybrid. So we considered both and coming up with this very rough estimate of about $1.4 million per year. And again, it will be based on substitute usage. And, you know, you just had the presentation on the 55 different ESAR funding. We would fund this with one of those funds and it'd be a great pilot program to be able to make sure this works, get the kinks on. If it doesn't, we would maintain the staff because we would need to transition over. And like I said, I want to redeploy my staff to work with the schools and say, you know, why is our absentee rate where it is? What can we do to help? And also tie this to some of the wellness things that we want to start working on across the district. So there you go. That's why we're looking to have an RFP for a substitute management system. Yes.
Is there one particular system that the states, the different counties in the state are using that you know of or that you think are preferred or just?
There's two different ones that we based our initial research off of.
Okay.
And it's, they both have their advantages and disadvantages. And, you know, having an RFP to see where they both come up with. And then a third one that may show up and say, we have some options as well, would be really great or, or even more than three. But there's, there's two main vendors that a lot of people use.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So what the, what are the offsets going to be in central office? If we're going to be spending an extra 1.4 million to do what somebody's doing? You know, what, what are the offsets going to be there?
Some of the offsets would be like, we do have costs for frontline system. We have costs for the drug test. We have, we, we have been utilizing the, the staff that I have for the training when Canvas came up and all of that. So it's mostly those things I mentioned first that are, are very small. If we find out that after three years the pilot goes well, you know, maybe we would transition and redeploy those people to, there's always something going on in HR that we would need as well. But for right now, we really see the opportunity to have both so that we're addressing the needs at the school and to have the substitute management system. Also, this is for teachers. If it goes really well, we would expand because we do other substitutes and we would expand beyond that. But we still have to maintain and cover those other substitute needs with our current staff. So I, I know that's more than you asked for, but those, the, the initial thing is the drug test, the frontline. Those are some of the offsets that would happen.
Okay. I'm just concerned about an ongoing addition to our budget of 1.4 million if we're not, you know, laying off somebody in payroll or in HR because they don't have this responsibility anymore.
Yeah. And I understand that's why we're going to take advantage of this time to pilot it and, and see how it works. And you just mentioned another offset, that there, it's going to take a little less payroll time because they're going to be doing the, the payroll for these subs. So that will help as well.
And what, what do we currently pay substitutes?
I believe is, if they're non-certified, 80. And this is using the standard state fee and 103 if they're certified.
So that's.
However, we, as you know, we came to you with some bonuses that we've structured for, for this year. But that's the standard rate.
Okay, so that's.
And if they're certified and they're, I'm sorry, there's one more rate. If they're certified and actually covering in their particular certification, they get paid at a higher rate than that 103. They get paid at the rate they would have.
So the highest they're going to make though is $13, which is less than our bus drivers or custodians? I'm just wondering if that's a factor for us not being able to fill these positions?
It is a factor, yet many of our districts across the state are also paying that amount. And that's what I was asking, too. And those rates of being able to fill at 98% was, you know, utilizing that same rate as well. So, you know, that, that's part of it as well. I wanted to make sure it's at that rate. And I do think it's part of that. I do think a, a discussion in all of this from a longer-term perspective would be to look at what we're paying subs and to make that adjustment. But that's all part of, as you know, the compensation that we come to you with every, it seems like every meeting. So that is something we're looking at as well.
So if we had an additional 1.4 million in, in the substitute budget, how much could we raise their pay an hour? I guess, I'm just saying, instead of doing, I'm, I don't know, like, I don't know if you have, if you could get us numbers on that, I'd be curious to know what that would be.
Okay. I could, I could take a look at that. But yeah, there's, they're still doing all that filling and, and all the, the sourcing for it that I, I, I see a lot of value in that as well. But I can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bonner Reed. For her call, I thought Ms. Montzinger's had her hand up for quite some time. Could you please let Ms. Montzinger speak?
Well, first, thank you because Leah, a lot of the questions you asked were ones I had. So thank you. My concern again is, I think, very similar to what happens to the pay for the people doing the work. And I just, whenever you add a management system, you're, somebody's getting paid to do that. And the money comes from somewhere. So. So that's my concern is, and I'm confused how management systems can get substitutes that we can't get. I'm confused by that.
Well, one of the things is that is their business. That is, that's what they do all day and all out is source and identify subs. They also have all these other programs that they're able to do that I mentioned that, that we don't do. The giveaways and things like that. So that's how, that's how they're able to do it. Because it's really the business that they're in. And so.
So yeah, my, my concern is just over the years, I've watched as we move staff into being staffed by outside agencies and have people be hired elsewhere rather than be school system folks. And I guess one of my questions would be, you know, would it be possible, for example, for us to have a pool of full-time substitutes who work where they're needed but get health benefits? Or is there ways of making people be part of our system?
Oh, you want to come up?
So subs are not permanent employees of the district. Therefore, they do, they do not qualify for benefits. Long-term subs, however, do wind up getting benefits depending on how long they sub for. And so. And so, yeah, the state only provides the money for us to pay subs. You know, that $100 or $103 or $80, the state provides those funds for us. But they don't provide funds for full-time subs.
So, yeah, again, my question was because what I was seeing presented that the agency would provide is that they'd provide health benefits of some sort.
Right, and they, they do that out of the, out of the fee we pay them. They're providing all these extra services out of the fee that we pay them. And the fee is coming from these grant funds that we have that we're going to, we want to try to do during this pilot program.
Yeah, and I understand the desire. I just get concerned because what I see is when we contract out, we tend never to reverse that. And that happened, whether that happened with cafeteria workers or bringing in teacher assistants or cleaning services. It seems every time we contract out that we keep doing that rather than having people be our employees. And I know that substitutes are not employees. And so that was my question, is there another way of thinking about this? And I do, I have great concern about sort of contracting out so many things. So, that's my concern.
And with the companies that, and this is my experience from a previous district that also contracted out subs. They will try to hire our subs. So, for the sub that work for us is not really a difference in pay. They may get more benefits because they are coming through the company. They get more benefits by going through the company as opposed to being, you know, coming through the district. And when this is over, if we decide not to move forward with the pilot and say, we don't, you know, the contract's over, we can bring those people back into, back in-house. The subs that are on those lists.
Yep, can I add something a little quickly? So, I came from a district also that had a sub-management company. I, I will tell you the efficiency, the manpower, the, it is, it, the people in Jevlin's team to manage that and everything else they're managing, they cannot be as effective. And what she's saying is, this will allow them to go into schools to provide other supports. And I will tell you, this, this type of contract, if it goes well, is one that districts always keep because they get such a good sub-fill rate. So I will tell you, it's, many large districts do this, and I'm not sure how they would do it without it. Because it is, it's the efficiency, it's the management. And Jevlin still will need someone from her team to work with them. It's not like we're releasing everything and saying, have a good day and manage this. You have to have a project manager, someone that's in Jevlin's team that works directly with one of these agencies, make sure that it's running well. I mean, there are checks and balances. So it's definitely a partnership and not like giving our people away. So just to, just, hopefully that eases a little bit.
And I, go ahead.
One other question I had then, so will it be easier for our teachers and our principals when they need subs, that they will, it will be much easier for them to just contact somebody?
Yes, and if it's not, then it would be the end of that project. I guarantee you. Be the end of that.
That is something that certainly takes people's time.
Yeah, I didn't enter into this lightly. As you see, it wasn't the first thing out the gate. We really tried a lot of different ways, but 60 to 70% fill rate, just, we cannot maintain that. We need to get this up into the high 90s. And, go ahead.
As long as, you know, the assurance is that our subs are going to get paid, they're not going to lose money by doing this.
Absolutely, they are going to get paid. And we will still study and investigate if we need to make adjustments to sub-pay. That is still on our plan and our project plan to do.
The one thing that I, the one thing that I noticed when I looked at the information about this contract is how school districts use this system to try to impact the burden that priority schools have on using substitutes as their main way to sometimes teach children, right? And so if, it appears that maybe this is a way to alleviate a lot of that burden, which generally falls on the priority schools, which become an equity issue. How do we leverage any system to empower our substitutes to be able to go into those priority schools and provide that level of impact that we need at those schools?
Thank you, yes. In fact, that's the reason why some districts originally launched it and then they end up using it across the entire district. And I'm suggesting we just, we come out of the gate using it across the entire district so that we can study how it's working in different parts of our system. And that will be part of the decision at the end if we maintain this.
And just with my prior history, they do provide reports that anybody at central office that will, you know, the people like Jevlin can go online or anybody in HR can go online and look at the fill rates on any given day of a school to check, to see daily what's happening. So it's not like we, you know, throw it out there, let them do their thing. We can look and see the fill rates. Like, we have access to the system, we can see what's going on, we can see which schools are doing well with fill rates, which ones are not, and make adjustments from there. And just, just so we'll be clear, the $1.4 million markup is not the total amount of the contract. That is just the piece that we have to pay above and beyond the subs pay. So the contract will be for more, but we're using the 1.4 ESSER funds because we will use our sub dollars we already have in our budget. Because those, you know, we already have the dollars available. We just, and the contract will be for the full amount, but the 1.3 is just the markup, 1.4 is the markup.
Right. Well, it's an opportunity to go out and do something that obviously we're, we are challenged to do. So if we can do that and especially use those dollars, it seems like we should take advantage of that.
So, just so I'm clear, the, in your current personnel, there are no personnel changes that you expect in your office? You're not getting rid of any positions?
No.
It really is more so, you are excited about the opportunity to really allow people to do some additional things?
Exactly, to repurpose them. And it's only two people, by the way, for a district of this size. I'm not saying we're flowing with people supporting us. It's two people. And I want them to be able to repurpose to make the sub-experience better, to support schools and ideas and creative ways to reduce the number of needs for subs. That's what I hope the ultimate outcome will be as well. And to partner with other aspects of HR, wellness, workers' comp, FMLA. What, what can we do to help figure out how we can, you know, bring and sustain people in work? And so, all the different things that, that will support the schools. That's really what we're looking to do.
And so currently, do we offer our subs any type of professional development?
We, we do. It's, we have an orientation when they come join us. We had to add Canvas training to that when we were launching this year so that they would be familiar with it. And so that has been the training primarily. And then the schools, I think there's a lot of variety in what training and support they provide them there. And I'd like to standardize them. We have some schools that are great at doing, at welcoming. I'd love for us to look at and do lessons learned. And, and it'd be something that, you know, you come sub at Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, you're going to have a good experience. Because we want you here and we're prepared for you. And, and that's the ultimate goal.
Okay, and then my last question might be, might be for you, but it also might be for Lauren or Daryl. So, because I want to understand a little bit about, because there was a question around our other contracted services, and I just want to make sure I kind of understand the difference. I think that, in my mind, when I think about it, when we contract out for sort of a custodian or for another position, a lot of that is due to maybe like some needs personnel-wise. And so there, it's a little bit different in terms of kind of what you're talking about in terms of our needs. So I just want to understand that for clarification, just in case, you know, because I know that that is a concern.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I can certainly address that. So for the child nutrition contract with Chartwells, there are actually 10 contracted employees in our district that support and manage that program. There's about 500 employees that are district employees that all work out in the schools as cafeteria managers and kitchen assistants. And then to your point for custodial, the main reason for that contract is that is a skill expertise. And so if you think about the amount of overhead that would be needed within the district to support that skill set, we have industries within our community that are experts in that, that can provide that skill and that service.
Right, okay. Thank you.
One question I had, will they provide an orientation type thing? That was my, it looked like, when looking at the contract, that they had some kind of professional development. So they will take over doing that part of, of what we typically do for substitutes, correct?
Yes, they will. They'll take, I mean, it will be part of our RFP to ensure that they do that. I still see us doing something that's unique to our district and pushing in to those trainings in terms of, well, this is what's happening now, you need to be aware. Or this is our expectations from subs at our district. So we'll push into those. That's why we still need somebody managing. As things change, like, I can imagine if we had done a subsystem last year, we would have been saying, you got to know Canvas. We got to work together and we're going to make sure everybody knows Canvas.
Yeah, and that was one of my, just so that we can personalize that to our district to a certain thing.
Yes.
And the other thing to, kind of to Elizabeth's point, it looks to me like if we have this many systems that go with a contracted-out substitute thing, maybe our state, maybe that's something that we, as boards or HR directors or whatever, could start to look at, okay, you average X amount of subs on, you know, every day. Let, you know, hiring full-time subs, offering them state benefits and those things, and those subs would just, you know, rotate and go where needed. I mean, to me, it makes sense that the state would save money or systems would save money in the long run if they did something like that. Just thinking outside the box for something down the road. But to me, from a taxpayer's money standpoint, that would make sense for the state to entertain some, some notions like that. So I don't know how much, how, what kind of different kind of advocacy groups you have within HR, but it may be something worth, worth taking to the state to, to start to look at. Because I would imagine that there isn't a district in the state that wouldn't like to save some money, so.
Well, the thing about subs is that, I mean, yes, some districts actually do hire full-time subs, but you only can hire but so many because, you know, the sub need varies from day to day. So you don't really know what you need, so you don't really know how many, how many subs they have on hand. And, you know, ideally, you want to have teachers come, you know, working every day.
Sure.
But obviously, you know, things happen, people get sick, people go on maternity leave. And that's where we, you know, implement the long-term subs for things like that. But on a day-to-day basis, it's hard to tell how many people are going to be out and how many people we have to have on hand, which is why it's, you know, a lot of larger districts are using these management companies because it's hard to source, you know, this many people, you know, when that is not your core business, sourcing subs. Like, HR's core business is recruiting and, you know, taking care of the current employees, but this is their core business. Another thing I wanted to add, that when we did implement this in my prior district, it really helped out the principals. Because even though Jevlin has her two people in her department that are, you know, responsible for subs, a lot of the subs, a lot of the subsourcing comes from principals. And that's what kind of takes a lot of stuff off their plate as well. So, when, when they know somebody's going to be out, they just go in the system, say they need a sub for a certain teacher. And then this vendor, you know, the subs, the subs, management system people, will send a sub their way. And the principals won't have to worry about trying to find subs.
Yeah, many other principals maintain a variety, a priority sub list.
I started to say.
Preferred, again, it can save them a lot of time as well. And that's what we're aiming to do.
So that, that was my next question. Because I know that we have subs in the system that only want to work in maybe one or two or three schools. Can they still put that priority on there with this vendor?
I see that as, that's part of what we would request from our vendor, for them to be able to do something like that. We got to maintain the people that we have, for sure.
Yeah, because you're going to lose a few subs if that's not going to be able to be a, because some people, they just want to work at certain schools.
Absolutely. And that's fine, because you know what, those schools need them too.
Exactly. Yeah, and I'm not talking about hiring, you know, tons of full-time subs. You do bare, bare bones, but to me, it would just make a lot of sense, plus you have people.
I would like to see some advocacy and getting that sub rate pay up. I think that would help tremendously too, so.
We currently do have some long-term subs. I think at some of the Spar 340 schools, we do have some long-term subs that we, that we provide to those schools, like full-time subs.
As you may recall, we expanded that this year and called them COVID subs and, and gave somebody to each school, so. Great questions. Any more questions? All right then, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're ready to go into our action items. Do I have a motion for the approval of the budget amendment number three and transfer number three?
So moved.
Second.
And our voters are me, Leah Crowley, Dana Cottle-Jones, Elizabeth Montzinger, and Alex Bohannon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, too. Could I have a motion for consider approval of the fiscal year of the 2021-22 audit contract?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, too, as well. Do I have a motion for the approval of funding of the one-to-one student device program?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, too. Consider approval, okay, do I have a motion for the approval of the RFP for substitute teachers?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It seemed lighter, so I'm going to ask if any opposed. All right, thank you very much. And I hand it back over to the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Board Member Bremer. So our Building and Grounds Committee, we have four items up for discussion and action this evening. The members of the committee are myself, Lyda Calvert-Hayes, Deanna Kaplan, Marilyn Parker, and Alex Bohannon. The first two items, Colin Moore will talk to us about the Meadowlark traffic improvement and also the Brunson survey and community meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and good evening, Ms. McManus and board members. I do want to update you on traffic, on some traffic improvement plans at Meadowlark. As you may remember, this was part of the 2016 bond. We brought this to the board in 2018. It was originally scheduled to be done then, but we ran into some conflicts with some traffic improvements that the city of Winston-Salem was making on Meadowlark Drive. So what we brought you back tonight is the construction plans. You have the construction plans in your documents for approval. We'll send that out for bid, and the plan is to do that work this summer. We do have a budget of about $1.8 million, and our preliminary estimate indicates that we're a little bit under that. We're probably in the $1.1 to $1.2 million range. So hopefully, get to bring you a project that comes in a little bit under budget. So what I've got for you, and I just kind of show you just some schematics of that. So what you've got here, you're seeing on the screen now, is the elementary school arrival and departure. This is a pattern that we implemented in November of last year. Ran it for about four or five months before COVID hit. Seemed to make a lot of improvements to the traffic that was stacking on Meadowlark Drive. Noticed that the buses were now getting there on time, and it seemed to get the kids in and out of the building a little bit quicker. So you can see we were utilizing the top part or the staff parking area and the main entrance. Well, as well as for the middle school arrival and the middle school departure. The two lines indicate double stacking that we had going. So both of these seem to work pretty good, a lot of communication with the principals and staff at the school. What we're planning to do now is basically flip where you come into the, to the school. So the car riders will now come in, what we refer to as the bus entrance or the south entrance, south driveway. And they'll go and utilize the bus parking lot. Buses, the middle school buses, and I'm a little bit backward. I do, I want to do it in that, this is the elementary-middle order, but middle actually gets there in the morning first. The middle school buses will come and they'll, they'll drop off. We've got room for about 19 to 20 buses to stack along that line. You can see we made some improvements, basically connecting the two circles between the middle school and the elementary school. And that'll serve as our bus drop-off. We'll have a canopy there that will go from the middle school to the elementary school. And then buses will depart. Parents will drop off in the back. And then in the afternoon, well, in about an hour later, the elementary school has the same pattern. No need for buses to stack that in the morning because they're, they're coming and dropping off periodically. It's not, it's not a constant, it's a constant flow of traffic, but there's nobody, there's no buses that are stacking there. In the afternoon, the buses will actually, when they, when they come back from their routes about 9 o'clock or 9:15, all the elementary school traffic is done, they will park back in the bus lot. So they'll park in the bus lot, the middle school will dismiss, excuse me, they dismiss at 2 o'clock. And by 2- and by two oh eight, their buses are rolling. So the buses will load, the buses will roll, and once the buses have left the site, then the cars will pick up in the bus lot. When the buses come back to pick up the elementary school students an hour or so later, they will come back to the front. So we've kinda, we've kinda ran it through our transportation staff, both principals and staff at school. So in summary, that's kind of what we're looking at for that Meadowlark traffic pattern. It's gonna be a pretty significant change, and the Meadowlark Drive improvements are actually starting. I think the start date is middle of May. I was on a pre-construction conference call with the city the other day, so that project's moving forward as well. So we'll coordinate those efforts. So again, what we've got for you tonight, I'm sorry, I had some stacking comparisons for you. We're currently at the elementary school stacking about 1,300 feet of cars. We're gonna improve that to about 2,200, so rough, almost 1,000 feet of more stacking with this pattern. At the middle school, we've currently got 1,075 feet of stacking, and we're gonna improve it to about 2,700, so an increase, a significant increase at the middle school as well. So again, the documents that you have, the construction documents for approval, we have those in permitting now and awaiting any kind of information back from them. So you have any questions?
Okay.
All right. And the next, excuse me, these masks get me a little raspy talking. The next item on the agenda is an additional survey for Brunson. So as you know, Brunson is one of the replacement projects for the 2016 bond. And we've had a struggle trying to find some appropriate land that we can build a school on. Looked at about 20 sites, and this information we've shared with you before with a local real estate firm. Took those 20 sites, narrowed it down to four sites that we evaluated, and that cost evaluation is in your packet and is available for view there. And what we're doing tonight is we're recommending the Patterson Avenue site. So that's the home of a former Thomas Furniture Plant. And so knowing that and knowing that it's an urban site, we, you know, we did a phase one and a phase two subsurface investigation. And from those results, it led to conversations with S and M E, which is our environmental testing firm, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to talk about, you know, any kind of remediation from any contaminants that may be on the site. So we do have a plan, or we have those discussions, and they feel certain that we could, a plan can be developed once it enters into the program on our behalf to make that school, make that site safe for the use of an elementary school. We have about eight or nine months ago did a survey, and it was kinda open to anyone that wanted to take the survey on what their thoughts were on the Patterson Avenue site. So what we're asking tonight is we wanna move forward with that, and we wanna do a survey specific to the Brunson population. So we've got about three or four questions to talk about the site and just see how that is and its direction. And we've worked with student assignment and with some of the technology people in Kevin's department and with Brent and his group to make sure we hit the Brunson students that attend Brunson, the Brunson students that are in the Brunson residential zone but going to a different school, and the Brunson staff. There was some discussion about including some Southwest HAG students. I think we're kinda stuck in that, and I don't know, McMath, if you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, I would think that would be an idea if we were thinking about bringing those students back. I'm not sure, I would rather ask the questions, I would rather us decide, is that something we're planning on doing? I don't, at this point, I'm not sure we need to survey them unless they're in the boundary of Brunson. That's my recommendation on that.
And we can certainly adhere to whatever the wishes of the committee or the board are, but we're prepared to release that survey tomorrow and can fairly easily make the adjustment to who receives it. And then each person that receives it will only be allowed to vote once.
I'd like to see it go to the Southwest parents as well, especially if we're considering bringing both of those programs under one roof.
And I think Ms. Mott-Singer had her hand up, so Elizabeth?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Cottle-Jones. One of the things, I think it's, I think before we're talking about doing a big program change, I think we, the focus has to be, from my perspective, on getting this school built. We've been surveying parents for more than a decade about the Brunson site and about getting Brunson going. And I just, I feel some real urgency about who is actually in the Brunson district and moving forward and getting this done. But I think, you know, it's a magnet program. That doesn't mean we should be surveying all the parents who might choose to send their kids to a magnet school. And I think the program about HAG is sort of secondary to getting the new Brunson built. And I know teachers at Brunson are just so, so ready for us to get this moving. Thanks.
So for me, though, I'm trying to think about the timeline, because when we talk about a survey, I guess in my head, I just, I wanna understand, because it's like we're surveying groups of people that we hope maybe will be in the building, but in terms of like final completion, what are we looking at, 2024?
Yeah, so if we move forward with the design in the next, let's just say, 30 days, we're looking about a year to get through the Brownfields program and finish the design. We've done some schematic design, so, but I think safely, we're talking about a year. And then typically, construction for that, for a site like that is gonna probably be 16 to 18 months.
So fall 2024 or around there? So I guess in my head, especially given the sort of history of, that we've surveyed parents and have, you know, done some of these things prior, it would just seem to me that right now, if you're surveying a group of people, the needs of people or the desires of people kinda change. And because the parents and the students who would occupy Brunson, even right now, wouldn't be the current students who are sitting in some of these places where we're sort of targeting the survey, I just don't, I guess in my head, I'm like, what, I don't know. It's just, it's a point just to think about.
I think you bring up an excellent point, and it's hard because how do you, I mean, how do you capture that? I think to Elizabeth's point, yes, there's definitely urgency in doing this because we have really, I feel like we've really strung along the current staff at Brunson and current families there with not being able to nail down a site. But I also think that we are talking about our magnet program. We have a, you know, we have invested in conversations and contracts with that. And so therefore, the, I wouldn't think it would hold up that much longer to talk to families since at one time, that program was all together, but then it was split. You know, if we're talking about trying to bring our magnets more to the center of the county, maybe that would be valid to go ahead and, you know, bring those parents in. I wouldn't think that would delay very long the process. But I think Board Member Bohannon brings up an excellent point, and that is, you know, you kinda just are capturing folks right there, but that's not necessarily the ones that will be there. I think it's really hard to do that. I think the biggest piece, and I'm sure Board Member Mott-Singer agrees, is the education part around what's a Brownfield. And that, I would think, I think we're surveying internally families that are there now, but I think our broader brush for the whole community would be to talk about and open up some of these meetings to make sure that members of the community understood the Brownfield and the whole process so that if they currently don't have a child that's in our district but will later, or a grandchild, you know, that they understand kind of the process and what we've been through. And because I think that's the biggest piece, is that education. And I think we have, also to reach out, I mean, our internal media team does a great job with that, but also to reach out to, you know, our newspapers and others to make sure that they cover that so that our community is, you know, they're led along the educational process with us.
And I would like to add, that is the other part of our next steps, is to have a survey. We plan to have a virtual and in-person community meeting to provide that information to the community. That will be our, we're trying to get that scheduled now, so.
And I'm wondering, with the survey, to Alex's point, and I was thinking the same thing. The third grade HAGs are even the only ones that, since that is a, it's a program that you have to qualify for. It's not like we can know who's gonna be there, but those third graders may or may not enter that new building. Probably not, but, you know, I guess surveying some set of that parents is better because the parents that are gonna enter, there may be some siblings that are coming in, but, you know, it will be more than likely totally different children, so, and families. So I don't.
Okay. And in the essence of time, we're looking, if we roll the survey out tomorrow, we're gonna give them a week. We don't want them to sit on it. We're gonna give them about a week, seven or eight days to get it done. And so it'll be a direct email to those. And I think, I don't remember who it was in the conversation, I think it was Hamad said that we don't necessarily have email addresses for every parent, but we do for every student. So every student will get the email, and what the parents that we have in our database will get it for those as well.
I think the one thing it can tell you is whether there is an outcry just from that specific group of people as to whether they have a real issue with the Brownfields side or not. And, you know, and that going forward's gonna be important, so.
And that's why I would be a proponent of surveying more people than fewer people for this.
And so did I hear correctly that we're just sending it out via email?
Yes, yes.
And the only piece to that is that, you know, I still think it's, and I understand, I understand that, but I wanna make sure that we hear from all the voices and that we're trying to hear from. And so, you know, with students being able to come back, you know, students in the buildings, I don't know what we could do, but to just, you know, I think it's important enough that if there's some way to put paper in hands to hear from families who, you know, they may not have personal email or check it, or we know we have issues. And so if we're gonna do this, I think it's worth our time, even if it extended it one more week, to do our best to be intentional to hear from all families.
I was hoping he would take that cue, so Andy's helped us out with the survey. I'm gonna see if he's got any insight, if you had anything you wanted to add to that, Andy.
Colin, as Andy is walking up, one of the important things is, so you're a parent, you get this information, you don't know anything about that site. One of the things that they're gonna get with the survey is education as far as pictures and things like that. So we could absolutely put stuff in kids' hands just to have a double dose, but it would include, it would have to include the education, because that's what we're trying to find out, right? Is if they're good with that site. Our goal is to bring back a recommendation at our next board meeting, just so you know, we really want to move on this. Andy, go.
Can I ask a question real quick, Andy, before you may be gonna answer this? But are we doing this in Spanish as well, the survey?
Yeah, that's right. It was translated, so that preface that Ms. McManus just mentioned is in Spanish and English at the very beginning of the survey. There was a question about, you know, emailing this out instead of, say, putting a link. So, you know, we had this issue the last time we sent this survey out, that we got a lot of responses, and it seemed like that really skewed this. So what emailing this out allows us to do is make sure this can only be completed one time by each participant. And so that's why it's our recommendation that we email it out. I recognize, you know, maybe that's a smaller group of people that we're gonna target. Now, we can email it out to anybody that you all choose. I think right now, your audience is Brunson students, Brunson parents, and staff, right? You know, and if you'd like us to include others, we can do so. But we believe that emailing it out allows us to target folks and prevents us from getting somebody who goes and fills it out 20 times.
Can I stop for, I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, but Ms. Mott-Singer's had her hand up, and so I just wanted to let, she may have something that she wants to ask directly. Ms. Mott-Singer?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Dana. This is just a comment. When we were looking for where to build the new Career Center, there were a lot of people in the community who were actually very opposed to that site, who were current parents because they were scared about crossing 52. And quite honestly, the pushback was pretty strong. And we made a decision that it was really important to have our schools placed throughout our community in ways that were accessible to students from everywhere and were reflective of our county at large. What I'd like to say is anybody's been to Career Center knows what an extraordinary view you have from Career Center, that it is such a vibrant, good place, and that it was a choice that people who were not thinking about the good of the whole, but only what they wanted for their individual child, were not necessarily eager. And the minute the school was built, they sent their kids there. And that's just historical. That's historical, and it's a beautiful school. And I'm really glad that it's placed where it was.
That's true, and just to, to trying to reach all the families, if they don't respond through email, will we have a mechanism to try to give them a pen and paper copy? Is there a way to keep up with people?
Yes, ma'am, that's my.
So that the teacher can hand it and say, you know.
To have paper copies available at the school, yes, ma'am, that would be my recommendation. Then we will hand out those, yeah.
Okay, good. Ms. Calvert-Hayes?
Do we have already a cost that we know how much this land is going to cost us? And then also, I know that just in talking to the owners of this land, there was a lot of other development that was to go close to the school if we decide to build it there also, as far as housing and different things like that. And is that something that's set in stone, or is that just something that we are hoping is gonna happen? Because I think parents would be much more interested in knowing, you know, what is gonna be developed around the school. Because if you go down that area right now, it's not the best location to be riding in at night, much less during the day. So I just wondered about, you know, if we had something to tell us what's gonna happen besides just the school, that we could let the community know all of that.
As far as anything being set in stone, no, there is not. I know that the owners are in discussions with the parcel that's adjacent to us. And quite honestly, they're actually almost asking us permission when they talk to people. They're like, hey, this is who's interested. Is that okay if they're on this? So they've been very, very open with us, but nothing is public right now. I know they've had some discussions with some different entities, and it's nothing that would cause, that would cause any kind of impact to a school being adjacent to it.
And what about the cost?
Yeah, yeah, so we do have, we do have the property under an option just to kinda hang on to it, but that's, and I'm going for me, but I think it was for about 1.7 million. I apologize if I had a number.
I think we have the cost, I think we have it on here tonight.
The land, you want the land cost like on that sheet?
Right, it's on the sheet.
It says 2.7.
2.7, okay, 2.7 million, I'm sorry, yes, 2.7. And we factored that in when we were evaluating the different costs of the different properties.
And do we know what that land originally sold for?
I do not, but I can find, I can see if I can find out that information.
That would be interesting to me.
Okay.
So also, I just, I think the other piece that may be interesting is, and I don't know if this is something that we as a district have determined is, that we're sort of sharing at this time, is that the overall cost of the project, because we're actually, this is the cheapest plan out of the four options that we had. I think, and if we're talking about, because I know before we had some conversations about future development, you know, maybe some additional, you know, the savings that, you know, $2 million in savings, which I think this is, this option is $2 million less than the next highest option. Even that, to me, is like a significant amount of savings. And maybe, I think some, you know, having that information helps too, because, you know, people are taxpayers also, so.
Yep, okay.
Good points. Do we have other questions for Mr. Moore? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, will talk to us around the Food Service Management Agreement for the Summer Meals Program and also the renewal of our Food Service Management Contract.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good evening, committee chair, board members, and Ms. McManus. I'm actually gonna go through both of these items on the same slideshow because they're kind of interwoven. And so the first item this evening around the Food Service Management Contract that we currently have with Charwell's is around our summer addendum. And so each year, we come to you to extend our school year contract into the summer months so that we can offer summer programs to our students. We will do that same thing again this year, and we'll be coming back to you for an operations update in June to share kind of the overall summer food program with you. So this year, we are maintaining the current rate that we're So this year, um, we are maintaining the current rate that we're operating. Um, you may remember we've come to you this year with a lot of extensions for this contract, because we're operating the summer program as a funding program for the USDA during the normal school year right now. And so we're gonna maintain that same rate going into our summer program this year. Additionally, we have one year, um, open remaining on our Charwell's Agreement for the 21-22 school year. We are making the recommendation that we renew that agreement for that last and final year. And at that point in time, we will enter into a new RFP to bid that business again. And also looking to maintain that same summer rate for this summer of 2021 into that new school year. Um, we do imagine that some of the meal service that we're currently doing will actually continue into the fall. Um, you may have seen some of the great articles last week about our meal bundles. That may be something that we continue to support our Virtual Academy students and some other programs that may also be going on. So there'll be a lot of really exciting things to continue with this program and we're really excited about this partnership to continue. Any questions for me this evening?
No. Great. I, I, I don't have, I don't, I can't see hands if anyone, if Ms. Brimer or Ms. Mottzinger have any questions? Okay. Great. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
So we, um, we have four items up for action tonight. I, I just wanna bring up, this is not for us to discuss tonight, but I think this is of, of importance to this committee. So, um, I don't wanna break anything that's going on, but really late, like as I'm kinda coming into the building, then I, I saw an email, email around some concerns around the Haynes Park Phase Two Plan that looks like it's going out for bid. And I think we as a school district have a partnership and around that. So, um, at some point, um, I think we need to have some discussion about that. Um, because I think there's some concerns there and a lot of that is have we as a school district signed off on that plan? Because I don't believe it's come before this committee. So if we could, even if we have to put it on the agenda for the next board meeting or something like that and maybe not take action, but talk about it, I think that'd be great.
I will follow up. I saw the email. I just haven't had a chance to get with Daryl or Paul.
Yeah, it just, before we forget, this one, couple of times we're all in the same room, so I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, so we will, um, close our discussion items and move to our action items. The first tonight would be considering the approval of the metal arc traffic improvement plan. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I think we're all in the room, so we can probably just raise our hand. Okay. Uh, next to consider approval of the Brunson Survey and Community Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Thank you. And a second, was that Ms. Parker? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, to consider the approval of, uh, an addendum to the Food Service Management Agreement. Do I have a motion? Second. Anybody?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor? Great. Motion carries. And to consider the approval of the renewal of the Food Service Management Contract. I think the first one that we just voted on was for the summer, for clarification. And this one is to renew the Food Service Management Contract.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? And motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting and I will hand it over to Ms. Parker for the Curriculum Committee.
Before we go to, um, Ms. Parker, I think a couple of the board members were asking about a five-minute break. I think it's the chair, I think, Deion, I can call a recess for five minutes unless the board wants 10 minutes. So it's five, okay, thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess break. Thank you.
Here will be a PowerPoint for the next presentation.
So you're not gonna use this one?
No, but the second one.
That one?
That one will be my next one.
All right, so can we just pause, give me a, I'll pull it up, throw it in the slideshow, then you take over.
Okay.
Air over. And then?
That's Heather.
That one's next. And then that one's next.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
I think we're going to, um, call the meeting back to order. I know Board Member Jones, she stepped out for one second, but she asked us to go ahead and get started. So I'll turn it over to Board Member Parker.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started with Curriculum Committee. Uh, our first, um, discussion item is the Board Canvas Page Demonstration with Dr. Tina Lupton. So are you gonna show us how to do it, even those of us who are really not tech savvy?
I am.
Oh, yay.
All right, so, good evening, uh, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvert-Hayes, members of the board, Superintendent Mc- McManus. Good evening. So I'm just gonna take a couple of minutes, do a high-level overview of the Canvas webpage that has been developed for the board. We can also take some time, uh, later this week to do some other sessions where we can go a little bit slower and go a little bit more in-depth with what we have to work with here in Canvas. I also just wanna let you know that this is a, um, called a baby version. It's not fully built out yet, because we are still seeking feedback from you all on what works well for you, preferences, what other information you might want have, to have access to here in the Canvas page. So, the homepage is developed with some file folders. And the file folders indicate the different areas that there are documentations for. Further down on the Canvas site, we include our mission and vision for Wessex Alum, as well as our strategic goals. I remember this being very much of priority in a lot of our conversations and I wanna make sure that we have direct access to it, as well as a direct link to the strategic plan. And all of your amazing pictures at the bottom. So, I'm going to navigate through the file folders just to show you the content that you have access to within. The overarching goal of this Canvas page is to allow you guys to have a one-stop shop, to have access to all of the different information that you get. 'Cause I know right now you work in and out of different modalities. So for some of you, this might be ideal to have it all in one place. Now, this doesn't mean that any of the other areas are going away. We will still have access and utilize, utilize things like Symbly. But for those of you that are like me and you just wanna see it all together, you have Canvas. So, this is a layout of how the board meetings will look. This allows you to have a high-level overview of what was discussed during that board meeting. Rather than having to go into each board meeting to review the agenda, you'll have a highlight of what was discussed. And again, this is still being built out, so not all of the links are live yet, but this will just give you a demonstration. But you can click on one of the links to get the meeting packet that Ms. Lisa Sugg sends out to you all, will upload right here in this platform. I will say this one takes a little bit of time to generate, 'cause it is 279 pages. So it takes just a tab. As you can see, it has already started to upload. And this again has a nice, uh, comprehensive display of all the information that took place during that board meeting. So outside of the Board Presentations folder, we'll go into the Board Development. So this is essentially looking at the various trainings that you all participate in. So one of it, for example, is your Board Governance Training. Again, I'm just gonna click on the file folder and now I have all the documents that were shared during that training. And again, you can either choose to download it by selecting this little arrow or you can click on the file and it will open up right in Canvas for you, rather than having to download and open up the file outside of Canvas. The next file folder is our Committees. So again, same thing, you can either click on the link and the file will open up for you here in Canvas or you can download it. But again, it's a simply, it's simply your agendas that you receive during these meetings. Next is our Advisories. Now, these are broken out into the different types of advisories we have. For example, our Hispanic Advisory. And again, this is going to have all the information that was shared with you. We have access here to a website that was shared, as well as the different files that were shared during that meeting. Next, we have our Newsletters and there's a variety of newsletters that will be put in this file. Uh, you'll have the communications that come from Superintendent McManus on Mondays and I think Fridays as well. And then also the newsletters that you get from Lisa. So again, as all the other sides have worked, you can either click it to open it within or you can download it with the arrow. And lastly is our Legislation and Policies. So, same thing, when you, when we receive different legislative updates, they will be put in here as well. We will take the time to go in and do more historical uploads, 'cause right now we are trying to work from recent to more historical files. But it takes a little bit of time to do that. So before we get too deep into it, we did just wanna do an overview with you all so that way you could kinda see what the possibilities are and if there's any changes we wanna make along the way. Questions?
Can we log in now?
Yeah.
So is it, is it the whole email?
Yes, it is your entire email address. And then I think you should have your password. Lisa has all that information for you. So I don't wanna just blurt out your password for you.
But is it, is, is it a separate password from our normal email password?
Yes, it is. And you can, um, update it. You can go in and change it so it is the same as your email. But we have to set like a temporary one for you.
Any other questions? And so are you available in case, uh, you could step, step by step through this if we're, uh, having problems?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, you also have access to a PowerPoint that I created that has snapshots and walks you through all the steps of how to get to where we are here.
Okay, yeah, I saw that one, so that was helpful. So, so we just need to get our password from Lisa and all that then.
Yeah.
Okay. Super.
I see her, she's texting away back there. I'm sorry, say it one more time.
The calendar. Is the calendar gonna be obvious or is the calendar gonna be what Lisa sends to us?
There is the option to also add that, the calendar in here, 'cause there is a calendar feature. So we can add other items on the, the Canvas calendar too. Um, but I believe that Lisa will continue to use the Microsoft calendar that we do have.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next discussion item is the Contract with Kickup Professional Development Platform. And you're doing that as well, right, Tina?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
All right, so, for many years in Wessex Alum, we have utilized a homegrown professional development platform. Uh, unfortunately, it has kind of aged out. And we are looking to purchase a new professional development platform that is up to date with the times and all of the different features that we can really utilize to make changes that will benefit our teachers and students. Um, currently, the professional development system that we utilize, it cannot be accessed outside the network. So as you can imagine, yeah, as, as you can imagine, it has proved, it's made some things difficult over this last year. Um, there has been a lot of work that has needed to take place that has not been effective or efficient, because a lot of things have had to be done by hand, um, and by myself and my administrative assistant, another Lisa. So we have taken a lot of time in making sure that, um, teachers have attendance, that teachers are receiving credit and CEUs, and that we are verifying professional development. And it's just, it has really been a daunting task. But outside of network connective issues, the site itself makes it difficult for teachers to find professional development, because there aren't necessarily ease, easy-to-use search features. So, you know, recently on April 1st, we had our Professional Development Day and some teachers were. and some teachers were grown frustrated because they were having to be in and out of multiple systems. They have to do attendance in one place, reviews in another, and it, and for any teacher that wasn't at a school, it became even that much more difficult to be able to participate in the professional development. So what we are looking to do, after many months of reviewing, uh, different professional development platforms, Committee and I have come up with the suggestion of Kickup. Now, Kickup is, it will have two purposes. One side of Kickup will have the professional development system that will allow us to schedule our PD, capture attendance. Teachers will know where they stand in their CEUs and licensure, um, as well as reviewing the PD. And then on our end, as administrators, we can get very clear data on how effective our professional development is, and areas in which we need to provide more professional development. And then outside of that, it then has a growth platform. Now, this growth platform is nothing like what we have, and really nothing like what we could build, because it's able to be completely customizable to our needs, to our language, to our strategic goals, to show school walkthroughs, coaching, mentoring, feedback, and observations. We have many, many grants that we use, and sometimes it's difficult and very timely to get data to show whether or not we are meeting the goals of our grants. Through Kickup, it will become seamless to get the information we need to show our grant partners that we are doing our part. As well as, are how effective are our coaches? Now, we have some amazing coaches, but people are having to take that word for mouth. When we have a system like this that can show how far our coaches can reach. And I feel like our, our people deserve this, because they need to know that what they're doing is in service of our teachers, which then directly impacts our students. Any questions?
So Kickup has their own PD?
So Kickup is just a platform in which we can house our PD, uh, our schedule, our systems, and it integrates with Canvas as well.
Good, so we, if, if, if a teacher takes some PD, um, anywhere, they just have to have it, and you have to have it loaded on our Kickup, on our system? Or they can load it if it's a first time, I mean, how's that work? If, let's say, you know, I find a PD that I wanna do individually, and I don't see it listed. How would, I mean, how do teachers do that? And how, yeah.
So with how we do the PD selection, there's a couple of different ways. Because it can be PD that we do live, so they'll, the teachers will be able to register for the PD prior to the professional development occurring. Or there's self-paced professional developments that we can create and have housed through Canvas that will talk with Kickup. So that way they can register for that self-paced PD, complete it in Canvas, and then receive their certificate and CEU through Kickup. Because we can't do that in Canvas alone.
Okay. And so, of course, this just automatically keeps a record of all the PD, rather than you having, as in the olden days, you had to write it down and keep your little certificate stapled together and send it in, and all that good stuff.
Yes.
So, so now you, so, so the, we, the individual teacher, or the system can send that in for, for renewal whenever it's up?
Yeah, and teachers won't have to guess on what they need to continue their licensure, because all of their historical, we will be able to upload into Kickup. So what our system currently has, we will be able to export it and put it into Kickup. And then, any PD that they then participate in will continue to accumulate. So then when they go for renewal and working with our HR department, they'll be able to know exactly what they need in order to finish their licensure.
Great. Ms. Carly, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, will it send reminders, like saying, you need this, or, or that this specific PD is coming up? You know, the, you know, those kinda like push notifications that help get people, you know, to act?
So it will remind them of upcoming PDs that they register for. Um, and it can also then be directly uploaded to, it will link with their, uh, Microsoft accounts, and then they can put that PD sys, um, session, a reminder on their calendar. So it will automatically, automatically go to their, um, you know, their email calendar that they have, um, directly for them, but then, yeah, they can get, they can set up their notifications, again, very customizable, to how often they wanna get reminders about upcoming PD.
And with the sufficiency, it'll probably end up paying for itself?
Oh, yes.
That's great.
Yep, and, um, so overall, I reviewed about eight systems that are used across North Carolina. This is the most cost-effective.
So, I have two questions. Number one, on your, the slides about the platform itself, there was a slide that talks about, that it helps to cultivate alignment, and it says, um, it calibrates teacher's self-reflections against leaders and students' perceptions to identify areas of alignment and misalignment. Is that something we're doing already?
Um, not efficiently, because the way that we currently get data, it's not easily extracted from our current system, and it's also, it's, it's single. So when I, when someone gives me their review, I have to go into that individual person's review to get their feedback. And I have to do that for every single person that attended one PD. Versus by going on here, I can look at the professional developments that is, that teachers have taken. So if I'm an administrator, I can go into one of my BTs, look at the professional development that they participated in, and how that aligns to their, um, professional development plan. So I can look at and see how the PD they're taking strengthens, or the needs that they have for their classroom. And we, we are, we do not have those capabilities right now.
Okay, my, my second question is really just about, sort of, purchasing. So it may, it might not be for you, it might be for the superintendent, but, so for this one, we would do this via a purchase order? Or it, not, we're not doing like an RFP process for this, we're just selecting this firm and using this firm, right? Is that the way we're doing this?
So we did form a committee to get to the process of being able to select this. We did not do an RFP, uh, because we had enough vendors that we were already choosing from, um, to have enough people that then gave us their quotes, to say, okay, you know, this is kinda how they all line up together. And then at this point, Dion is reviewing the contract, and then, you know, next steps would be board approval, purchase, implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Our next discussion item is Bright Mornings Professional Development Contract with Heather Barstow.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Board Members, Curriculum Committee, Mrs. McManus. Um, I am really excited to be here tonight to talk about the Bright Morning Professional Development Contract. Um, just before we start, I wanna say that this is rooted within Teacher Academy and Winston-Salem Foundation Funds Peer Project Grant. We have money set aside for us to have this type of professional development and this type of experience for our Teacher Academy teacher leaders. We also know that this is going to be so beneficial to, for so many others in our district. Um, so we're opening it up to also include the Department of Teacher Effectiveness, the coaches, and then for some of our Teacher Academy to help out with mentors. So we're really excited about this professional development. Um, it's going to be done in two sessions. The first session will be Taste of Transformational Coaching, and we really wanted to go with Elena Aguilar's work and the Art of Coaching and Transformational Coaching. Um, in the past, long ago, our district did Coaching Rooted with Jim Knight, um, and you might remember some of that. And it's just based a lot in instructional coaching, while the Elena Aguilar work and the transitional coaching is more about building relationships, um, and just really working, it's building the relationships with the teachers and working with them a little bit more beyond the instructional capacity. Um, so we're excited, we also have done the Elena Aguilar Book Study with Teacher Academy, and then our Teacher Effectiveness Coaches have been working with that as well. So again, we are doing the Taste of Transformational Coaching, and that will be with all of our Teacher Academy new cohorts, and that's Cohort Four and Five. They have never had the coaching training that is required of them in order to be quality colleagues. So our Cohort Four came in last year at the end of the year, and, you know, we weren't doing any type of training. And then Cohort Five, we're currently selecting that, um, that group of teachers right now. So this coaching would directly impact them. We're also, as I mentioned, um, using it for the Teacher Effectiveness Coaches. And then, um, we also have a core group of Teacher Academy teacher leaders that also serve as mentors in our district, and they are helping to create some Mentor PD. And, um, I think that, while I'm excited for Teacher Academy, that Mentor Professional Development, I'm most excited about since we have not had that in our district, um, ever, as long as I can remember. Um, we don't have that continuous Mentor Professional Development. So our Teacher Academy leaders will be using this to create that. Um, and then, the next session is the Art of Coaching, and that will be done in August with all Teacher Academy leaders at our, um, summer retreat. And then we've also invited those, um, the rest of the district coaches back to join us for that session as well. Um, the next slide, I just wanted to show you the district impact and what this could do for our district. Um, and I even, I only focused on Teacher Academy because we are using Teacher Academy funds for this. Um, I didn't even include our other coaches. But with Teacher Academy teacher leaders, we have Quality Colleague as a pathway. Our goal next year is to have up to 175 mentees. So we have about 100 Teacher Academy teacher leaders. Um, they have to have the right training, the right skillset to work with their quality colleagues and with their mentees. The next part is that Mentor PD Creation Team. We have about 10 Teacher Academy teacher leaders that are working on that. We currently have 580 beginning teachers, and they all require a mentor. We have about 1,000 approved mentors, um, this year, or right now on our district list. And I, I train more mentors every day. So this, um, coaching training that these mentors are going to get will definitely impact our beginning teachers and the work that we're doing with them. Um, and then also, we always encourage our teacher leaders to take district leadership roles if they want. Um, and we do have quite a few teacher leaders that go on into other roles every year. Um, and that includes our opportunity, opportunity culture roles, um, school district administrators, IFs, MTSS, APs. Um, so we're really growing leaders in our Teacher Academy, and so this would continue on with them. Does anyone have any questions about the Bright Morning?
I have one quick question about the Teacher Academy teachers. Is there, are they given a monetary bonus for doing, what, what is that?
Depends on what they do.
Okay.
We, we have two pathways that they can do, so they can do Quality Colleague or Professional Development. If they do Quality Colleague, then they're assigned a mentee, um, not a beginning teacher, just a, um, fourth year through the end of time year. Um, mentee, and they get $500 every quarter for working with them.
Okay.
I take it back. It was five, it's 500 a semester for up to $1,000 at the end of the year. Um, Professional Development is $400 for them to create and deliver a professional development. And then we have a lot of other opportunities. Uh, we've kind of, we've been, become known in the district as a great group of teachers, um, a great group of leaders and people that, uh, other people can really depend on. So if there's curriculum things going on, curriculum writing that needs to happen, they always come to Teacher Academy. Um, we have five or six that are sitting on a panel tomorrow night, um, with businesses across Winston-Salem, just because they, they know that Teacher Academy teacher leaders are willing to step up and do it.
Thank you.
If my memory serves me correctly, in the past, Teacher Academy, um, folks did a lot of, um, observations with their mentor way. I was just curious, in reading this, when I, before the meeting, I was thinking, well, how, did this year, did they just do that virtually?
Oh, it was really tough.
Yeah, I, I was just, I was just wondering how you did that this year?
So, they did, and, um, we, our numbers for Quality Colleague were way down this year. Um, I think we only ended up having about 17 referrals for Quality Colleague this year, when in the past, we've had about 120, 130. Um, and we have, again, that, that pretty big goal of 175 next year. Um, and I think, I definitely know that we're going to get to the goal. It's just going to take us getting out there and making sure principals are referring their teachers that they think could use that extra support. We also included this year a self-referral form for teachers. Um, and on that April 1st Professional Development Day that Tina mentioned, we did a What's Teacher Academy All About session, and so teachers were allowed to come to that session. They heard what Quality Colleague was, and we actually had a few people sign themselves up after that session. So we're really excited and think that that might increase our numbers next year.
Great, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with all the new things, that sounds great.
Thanks.
Okay, next we'll go to Instructional Resource Request, Nicolette Grant.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvert-Hayes, Board Members, Mrs. McManus. Um, tonight I wanted to share with you some of the requests that we would like to put forward to make sure that our students have high-quality curriculum to meet the needs of our, our standards-aligned curriculum and assessments, and make sure our students are successful. So our goal is to have a guaranteed viable curriculum for our students all across our district. And guaranteed viable curriculum just means that we are providing high-quality, standards-aligned curriculum to all students, and that we don't have disparity from one school to another, one grade to another. And we know that our students deserve it, and our teachers deserve to have that curriculum. Um, and as we shared previously, we, we have some gaps in that area currently. And so with this guaranteed viable curriculum and the instructional request, um, these are the areas that we feel like are vital to supporting our strategic plan goals, specifically Goal One, to raise the achievement, close achievement gaps, and also to provide access to higher-level courses. So last year, we came before you and presented, um, ELA in math resources for K-12. Unfortunately, we did not have enough funding to buy for the entire district, but we were able to provide for select grades, um, different resources. So for elementary, we were able to get the ELA, for middle school, we were able to get math. Um, but, these are the areas of things that you have already purchased, and we are currently using in our schools. Oops, I'm gonna fix this mask. I do wanna give a shout-out to Ms. Moore's at Clemens Middle School who made the mask, so I had to wear it. So, I know, I love it. So I was visiting the school yesterday, and she, and almost half the staff were wearing masks made by Ms. Morrison, so I bought five of them, so, shout-out. Okay, she has an Instagram too, if you guys wanna visit her. Um, so what we are requesting, um, going forward, and this is with some of the ESAR funds that, uh, Ms. Gillis mentioned earlier, we wanna make sure that we, uh, utilize the federal funds to provide resources to make sure that we make up for some of the learning loss, and also to close the gaps and to raise achievement. So we'll be asking for, um, completion of that ELA in math adoption that we put forward before, as well as resources for our advanced learners, CTE, pre-K, health, um, Healthful Living, science. Uh, science, we had a, a lot of difficulty in this last year with hands-on learning for our students in this remote learning environment. So we wanna make sure that we have, um, digital and, and lab resources, as well as, uh, new social studies materials. Social study standards have changed, and we need materials for our students for that as well. So, uh, we, we'll be reviewing and putting forth some specific, um, items for consideration. But as I, both Mr. Sherrill mentioned and Ms. Gillis mentioned earlier, timing is of essence. Um, with some of the resources, we'll be ordering print textbooks. The companies are short-staffed and delays in production. And so, we need to order quickly so we can get the textbooks printed, ordered, delivered, received, out to the schools. received, out to the schools in time for professional development for teachers so that we have what our students need when we, when they come back in the fall. The other thing that we're going to be putting forth and bringing to the district is AVID. We've been doing a lot of work and researching supports for our students. And what we would like to start with first with AVID, and AVID stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. And it's a support program really specifically targeting underrepresented students, students who may be the first in their families to go to college, but making sure that we provide them with study skills, mentoring, support, helping them to be courageous enough to take more advanced coursework and be successful and supported in that coursework. And so in this first year, we want to pilot in our middle school, starting in sixth grade, at Clemens Middle, Mineral Springs, Paisley, the Virtual Academy, and Winston-Salem Prep. And these are schools where the principals requested and asked for the program, as well as piloting in a couple of ninth grades, the AVID program. It will be, we will have to add the courses, the course codes. So I've listed those course codes that need to be approved so that we can get those students registered. And we're in the middle of registration, so those students would then register at those schools for AVID. And the funding we'll be requesting is for the membership professional development and materials. Our goal is the next year to bring in six more schools and then more the next year, each year adding more courses. And additionally with AVID, our hope is that this will be paired with AP in high school. So we'll get more students to take AP courses, pairing it with AVID so that they have the support to be successful in those AP courses. And then finally, just so that you see kind of the ballpark range of the cost, all of the instructional resources that we plan to purchase, which again, covers every subject area, every grade level across the district, will be about $14 million of ESAR funds. We also will be asking for about a million for each year, over three years, for professional development to help our teachers to learn the new curriculum and feel comfortable with the new resources, as well as instructional strategies. And then also, as Ms. Wright presented last month, our extended learning, our extensive extended summer learning will be about 4.3 million. It might go up a little bit. We just saw House Bill 82 is asking for us to include signing bonuses, so that will now take the, the cost up a little bit, depending on how many teachers sign up. And then just for our public, just know that next week, on April 19th, applications for our summer learning programs will go out, both for students to sign up and for teachers who are interested in, in teaching. Any questions about our vision for the instructional resources using ESAR funds?
Questions? I have one. Students who want to do the AVID program, will, will teachers sometimes kind of help those students make that decision if they think they're a good candidate for that? Or will they have to totally be recommended or?
There's a process. Typically, the school will first advertise and make sure that their students are all aware. This will be starting in sixth grade in those pilot schools. So making sure they're aware what AVID is and how it's there to support them, making sure that they have that schedule built in, teachers get the training. And then there is an application process. Students apply, so that students have to take ownership and say that this is something that they want to commit to. So the students apply and there's like an interview process with the teachers, a small interview panel with the school for the students to be selected for AVID.
Good. And, and teachers can certainly recommend to individual students.
Absolutely. The teacher can recommend. The student still goes through the interview process for that buy-in, but yes.
Now that, that's great that the student has had buy-in as well. So that's great. Ms. Crowley, you have a question?
Yeah, it's, so would they take it in as an encore class?
Yes.
Okay.
And then ultimately, all of the teachers that are content teachers would also get trained. So the math teacher would have AVID training, the ELA teacher would have AVID training, social studies. So those same strategies are used throughout the content classes in addition to having this encore class of study skills, mentoring. AVID students also do college visits. So there's a lot of great components in the AVID program.
I think we used to have that years and years and years ago and it was a really, really good, good program. I mean, I'm talking like 18 years ago or something. It was.
We would love to eventually have it at all middle and high schools.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
We have three action items. First, consider approval of professional development platform. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, thank you. And sorry, I did not tell us who, who's on the committee. Myself, Ms. Crowley, Ms. Kaplan, Ms. Mott Sanger, and Mr. Bohannon. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We'll raise our hands here, Elizabeth, and you can speak. Next is, that passed. Consider approval of Bright Morning Professional Development Contract?
So moved.
Second.
Checking.
All right.
Third.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. And last, consider approval of instructional resource requests?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes as well. Thank you very much. And Ms. Mott Sanger, I will pass it to you for Policy Committee.
Thank you so much. And it is exciting that we are going to be getting these instructional resources that we have needed so desperately. So this is so good for the district. Policy Committee members are myself, Andrea Bremer, Deanna Kaplan, Marilyn Parker, and Alex Bohannon, although of course, all members are part of the discussion. And we have two discussion items and the first is about this District Code of Conduct, of Character Conduct and Support, Engaging Schools Contract. And I believe that's Dr. Jesse Pratt is bringing that to us.
Good evening.
And Effie McMillan.
Thank you, Ms. Mott Sanger.
And I can't see you at all, Effie, and I am so sorry, but I'm looking and it's like, of course, Effie.
It's okay. Good evening, Ms. Mott Sanger, Superintendent McManus, and other board members. So tonight, the actual Discipline Steering Committee is all here to share with you our discipline data report and our next steps, what we're recommending as next steps to address Goals Two and Goal Five in our strategic plan. Goal Two, as you know, is about equity and access. And Goal Five is specific to safety, climate, and culture in our schools. And so the strategic plan measures specifically is for reducing discipline disproportionality. And then Goal Five is to improve the quality of the learning environment, student behavior, well-being, and overall safety. So as I said, the whole Discipline Steering Committee is here tonight. Up next will be Nathan Craver, who's going to talk about the data, Deborah Harris is here, Dr. Pratt, and Mary Todd Allen. We've all been working together to get us to this point, to bring this information to you, and then to propose to you how we want to move forward to address our discipline in the district. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nathan.
All right, good evening. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the data that we've seen. As, as you look through this data, this data is from the 17, 18 school year, as well as the 18, 19 school year. Because last year of the, with COVID shortening the year, we felt like these two years would be the best model to do a comparison. So we can talk about last year, if you have any questions about that, but for this presentation, we just looked at those two years. And so as we started to look at our discipline data, we wanted to answer some questions. So the first question we asked was who is being referred? And so when we look across our data for those two years, approximately about 17% of our students across the district had a referral. And what is a referral? Well, a referral is a discipline action that results in an incident being entered into power school. And so that requires documentation. So for example, if a student were acting up in class and the teacher called them out in the hallway, had a conversation, student went back to class and went the rest of the day, that's not a referral. But it's when an administrator gets involved and it has to be documented in power school. And so we're looking at those documented incidents in the school. And so about 17% of unique students, and when we say unique students, we're not talking about repeat offenders, we're looking at individual students who had a referral. They may have had one, they may have had 10. We're talking about unique students. And so like we said, 17% for both years had a referral. And of those, when we start to look at our different student groups by race in this case, 30% of our African-American students had a referral. And then when we look at our other student groups, 9% of white students had a referral and about 16% of Hispanic students had a referral for those two years. And you can see there on the graph, the total population, and then the percentage of students is in gray who had a referral. And so the next question, again, we're still trying to answer who has been referred. So what we wanted to do is calculate, and what we're using here is what's called Relative Rate Index. And Relative Rate Index is a measure that allows you to compare the experiences of two different groups within the school and how that compares. So how do they have, you know, how are they experiencing school? And you can use this ratio for anything, you know, discipline or any other kind of incidents. It's the same calculation, we're using this for, for discipline in this case. And if two groups were to have the same experience, this number would be one. So we, one is your comparison number. And so when we start to look at this Relative Rate Index, sometimes called Risk Ratio, we can look and see a comparison between groups. And so for those two years, what we see is African-American students in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools were about two ti, about two and a half times more likely to have a referral than all other students. And so as you continue to look through that, when we compare African-American student population to our white student population, what we see is that it's a little over three, so about 3.2 or 3.3 times more likely to have a referral than white students. And if you look at our white student population, you see their number is around .4. So that means they're less likely to have a referral than the other students in the schools. Not represented in this graph, but additionally, males are more likely to have referrals than females. So we see that across our data as well. And when we start to look, as you guys know, in our strategic plan, we also identify students with disabilities as a subgroup that we want to look at. And so as we look at this, EC students are more likely to have a referral than non-EC students. But as we compare across there, seriously and emotionally disabled students are, at this time about, for these two years, a little over four and a half times more likely to have a referral. And as you look across there, you see those numbers highlighted in yellow. There are some, some groups in there like hearing impaired and visual impaired who have higher ratios, but our number of those students is very small. So if one student were to get a referral, that can greatly impact that number. You know, so those numbers are so small that one or two students can really impact that number. So those numbers can be a little bit off, but with most of our subgroups here, when we're looking at those, they're pretty, pretty effective in terms of looking at them statistically. So then the next question is, well, we know who's getting referred, so why are they getting referred? And you can see here our top eight incidents. Now on this slide, this is not unique students, this is the total number of incidents. So this may be the same student getting a discipline incident 10 times, right? So there could be 10, 10 of those, right? So it's not unique students, we're just looking at what they're getting written up for. And in this case, you can see both years, we had the same top eight. Nothing really changed in terms of what, what students are most likely to be written up for. You can see the numbers did change, some fluctuated, but within the top eight, they stayed in the top eight and the same order. Yes, ma'am?
And you have it broken down by age group?
I do not in this particular presentation, because we knew we were time limited, but we do have that data and definitely can share if, if you want to see.
I'd like to see that.
Okay. And so you can see there disruptive behavior, insubordination, aggressive behavior are our top three. And you can see as we scroll down there. And so then, as we continue to look, we want to ask, well, what is the result of the referrals? And in this case, we want to know who's being suspended. If you're suspended, you're missing school and missing time. And so we know that's, definitely impacts your ability to have student achievement. So as we looked at this, in this particular case, we can see here that African-American students were approximately five times more likely to get a suspension than white students in both years. African-American students were three times more likely to get suspended than the other, than all the other groups put together. And when you compare our different student groups, the Asian subgroup of students is the least likely, or is the only ones, has a lower Relative Rate Index than white students in our district.
Can you clarify something for me?
Sure.
When you say five times more likely to get suspended than white students, is that than white students who committed the same offense? Or is it just comparing black to white?
It's, it's, so Relative Rate Index, what it does is it takes all of the students in one subgroup. So in this case, it would say all the African-Americans students who had a referral, and you divide that by the number of African-American students in the district, and you get a percentage, which we call risk. So what's the risk of being written up? And then you do that with your comparison group. So for, if we're comparing African-American students to white students, then we would say, well, what's the risk for a white student? And so we take all of the white students who have a referral and divide that by the total, and you get a percentage of students who have a referral. And then you compare the two. And so when you compare the two, in this particular case, the ratio for African-American students is five times bigger than the white students.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And so what, if I would, another way to say that, the average student of African-American is, like I said, five times more likely. Or if you look at the percentages, it might be 5% compared to 1%. So it's the 5%, or excuse me, the five times more likely. You guys have, may have seen in the past, discipline disproportionality numbers. And when you look at that rate, it's a little hard to compare between different groups. This Relative Rate Index is intended to be able to make comparisons between groups where disproportionality is really more of just a percentage. And so we also wanted to look at this by students with disabilities. And so you can see, again, suspension students with disability are, you know, 1.8 times more likely to be suspended. And then African-American students with disabilities are 3.2 or 3.4 more times more likely to have a suspension as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pratt. Any last questions about the data?
Yeah, so, and this may be a question for Ms. Todd Allen. Going back a couple of slides to, was the, it was the one about the seriously emotionally disabled students who are over 4.5 times more likely to be referred. So is there disproportionality in the students who are diagnosed or, like, are there disproportionals in that as well? In terms, versus our student population?
Yes, we have found that African-Americans are, and we're getting better, but they have four to five times more likely to be identified in that category. So then if you have those students who are in that category being suspended, it's going to impact African-American students more.
Okay, thank you.
And a D1 is included in this, a D1 would be the lowest offense in any of these offenses, is that correct?
Yeah, so a D1 is just a, is any discipline referral.
Right.
Yeah, and so the way that we identify that within the system is each referral gets an action as well as a behavior type. And so if you have a referral, then the assistant principal, principal, whoever's responsible for entering in that information would then check up to five actions that they took and then also up to five behaviors that occurred. So if you got in a fight and you perched out the principal, you're going to get two behavior, two behaviors attached to that incident, and it could result in a parent phone call and a suspension. So you could have up to five actions and up to five behaviors per incident.
Okay, or it could just be a D1 with one, but it would still be reflected in these numbers, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So we aren't, so is, it isn't possible that a D1 could not make it into the system? Like, so if a teacher, like, so when I think about it, I've been written up for like insubordination and like have had to go to like period detention. And so I'm just like, you know, in my head, I'm like, did that make it in the, you know, is, is it possible?
So, so this screen, the referrals, anything that resulted in an action that would be entered into the system, whether it's, you know, in some of these cases, it might have just been a parent phone call home. It could have been, you know, a timeout where we sat with the principal for 15 minutes. So anything of that nature is captured in the referral. But for our district, the most common action or the highest But for our district, the most common action or the highest total number of actions for any action in our district is an OSS for these two years. So we had roughly nine thousand OSS incidents for these two years. So when you look at that, it's so it's the single highest one, but the other ones add up to more than that, but singularly it has the highest total.
That is disturbing.
Yes, thank you Nathan. So now that we've shared these data points with you, we need to share some next steps in addressing our discipline disparities within the district. We created a district code team to drive this work to revise in our student code of conduct. The members of the team are listed here for your review. The district team is planning to partner with engaging schools that have worked with several districts in, in North Carolina such as Orange County Schools and Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools. The district, selected district code team members reviewed several code of conduct for exemplars. We met with Wake County Public Schools and Chapel Hill Carboro School System to discuss their process of addressing disparities within their discipline policies. The engaging school process met the criteria of the team. We, we especially like how the engaging team, engaging schools engage the entire school community in the process of creating a new code of conduct while reducing the disparities in discipline outcomes. There will be four phases in developing a community code of conduct and support. The first phase will be the code assessment, assessing our current practices within the district. Recalibration of the code to make sure that we are addressing our disparities. We will have an orientation of the code where we provide professional development on the new code that was spent, that will be created. And then we will launch the code in August. Next, we will hear about each of the phases that we will engage with, with engaging schools.
Good evening. The goals of our partnership with Engaging School, we have five goals that we'd like to accomplish. First, we would like to create a blueprint for promoting good conduct, good citizenship and good character, which we all know is critical to an effective code of conduct. We want to implement a restorative, accountable and equitable district-wide approach to discipline. We want to amend our current discipline practices that adversely impact students of color and with students with disability and we saw the, the data on that, that Nathan had presented us. And we want to implement consistent consequences, interventions and classroom disciplinary practices across schools in the district. Also, we want to support students' development of social emotional competency and provide them with the tools for helping students understand, appreciate and commit to the district-wide rules and expectations. As Dr. Pratt had addressed, there are four codes, the four phases. So our first phase is the, the first phase is the code assessment. And that is going to take place within, would like to take place within June and August of this year. And so engaging schools code team will conduct a close examination of historical and current disciplinary practices, policies and procedures. They will review the student code of conduct. From their findings, they will provide us with a report and a workshop to review and discuss the student codes of conduct and the recommendations to the district team. Our next steps would be to develop a district task force team. And that comprises of several stakeholders, administrators, board members, staff, student, faculty, friends, families, I'm sorry, and juvenile justice professionals that will also be on that team. And so next for code two, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Todd Allen.
So we're well underway on phase one. And phase two began September twenty twenty one. And phase two is called recalibration of the code because this is where we're really going to dig deep into the current code of conduct and begin to look at it systematically. In this phase, we will schedule meetings with our district, chosen district task force team that Ms. Davis just explained. And the purpose of those meetings will be to define the overarching goals and core values and beliefs that drive our code vision. During that process, we will identify rules, rights and responsibilities for students, families and school and district staff. You can see it's much more far-reaching than just listing a list of consequences. It is looking at the communities, what we define as the community's response to student behavior. We'll formulate more discrete levels of concerns and violations. And more importantly, standardized consequences across the district. In this phase, we start to look at those restorative interventions that are aligned with assigned consequences that help students reflect on their behavior, problem solve, repair harm and learn new skills to get back on track for school success. The recalibration process prioritizes universal classroom tier one practices that increase academic engagement and equitable treatment to create a classroom culture of care and reduce disciplinary incidents. The outcome of this phase is the development of a revised code of character, conduct and support. Next slide. Oh, I can do it? Thank you. Phases three and four, I'm just going to talk about those together. This is a time when we're going to design a comprehensive and coherent plan to launch the new code of conduct in the district. That will engage, have us engage all of our schools in developing code teams themselves. A whole learning process, a professional development plan, agendas and materials to ensure that the district, across the district are ready to implement this with fidelity. The structure, the policies and the practices aligned with what's going on in the classroom is the most important part of that. And the outcome of this will be an orientation process for parents, for students, for our faculty and for the community.
Is that the, is it a good time for people to ask questions now?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I know that Mr. Bohannon had some questions. Could I also make a request that you pull up the list of your committee members? Because it went by so fast, I didn't get a chance to see that. If you'll go back so that we can see the committee members, well, thank you.
That actually is my first question. Was there any thought given to any school administrators being a part of this group?
So
Or a social worker?
Social worker, with the recommendation for engaging schools, the district code team is made up of district level personnel. When we get to the task force team, that's when we involve the principals, social workers, board members, all community members in the process. So this team here is just organized the work for us over the year and making sure that we make the appropriate connections with all stakeholders.
Okay.
What, was there an RFP?
Do you have other questions, Mr. Bohannon?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, and I think, was that you, Ms. Crowley?
Kathleen.
Yes.
Was there an RFP associated with this company and where did it originate? Where did it come from?
So we, in our investigation or research around districts in the North Carolina, we ran, we ran upon this company, we came upon this company in talking with Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools. They have a real strong process that they implemented and really engaged their school, their school community with several partnerships with organizations within their community, parents, stakeholders and really complimented, complimented engaging schools around that process and how they engage and collaborate with the community members to really have input on developing the code of conduct.
And the surrounding, like Orange County too, you said? I mean, in part of the, some of the districts that were using this, Orange County was one of them also.
Orange County utilized their services, Chapel Hill Carboro, they did some statewide training as well. And they're also in the process of, of, of working or initiating work with several other districts within North Carolina as well.
So Ms. Kathleen reminded me of my other question. On the summary, it was a results summary, I think from a school system in
New York.
New York, and that was Syracuse.
Yes sir.
The superintendent from that letter, it said Dr. Sharon Contreras, is that the same Dr. Sharon Contreras? That superintendent in Greensboro, okay. All right, I just want to make sure, thank you.
That is correct.
So I, I'm not sure if this is covered in, in what this consultant would do, but I'm concerned that this seems more, I mean, we already have like our list of policies and everything, they're clearly not being applied equally or equitably. So I'm concerned that the focus of this is, is more on the punitive part. And I feel like it should be more focused on the preventative part. So I personally would rather see more, more of our funds going toward tools for, you know, for communication skills, dealing with adversity, restorative practices, counseling, therapy, trauma-informed approach. And, and definitely the results of unintended bias. You know, so that's, I'm, I'm looking more from the prevention standpoint than, you know, making our code of conduct clearer and, and making sure we, you know, come down with a hammer on everybody.
So it's, it won't come down with a hammer. I think this process will help us develop best practices around discipline and discipline outcomes. So we'll look at restorative practices, that's a major component of it. We'll look at equally, equitable classroom strategies that we can give teachers. So this will, this code, when it's done, will be a teaching tool, not only for our students, but for our families and also our administrators to really, how do you correct inappropriate learned behavior within our environment?
Or de-escalate a situation that's going to
Yes ma'am. So this is, this is the part that they will bring us all together to share these strategies with us and you will see that embedded within our student code of conduct when it's, when it's done.
Okay.
This is Elizabeth, I have a couple of questions. If, if you, I, I'll need you to interrupt me by the way, board members, because I don't see you very well. So when you have questions, please, please ask them. I wanted, my concern about who's on the committee in terms of initially is that it's almost and Lida, I'll ask, I'll calling you right after, or do you want to go first, Lida?
No, you go right ahead.
Okay. I'm looking at the district code team and what I'm seeing is all people pretty high up on the food chain. And I'm not seeing students and teachers and folks involved in, at the school level and who are experiencing this for their input as to what is necessary. And I think that we, it tends to, you know, we tend to make up our minds and then go ask the people who are affected if they agree with what we came up with. As opposed to starting from the bottom down of, we have lots and lots of students, we have lots of teachers, there is this discrepancy, people have been aware of it for years. We've done MTSS, we've done single school culture, we continue to hire out programs. And my concern is that, that there are things we know to do. We know that we need a restorative justice program throughout the whole district. And we even know people who are interested in helping implement that who are based here in Winston-Salem. And I'm wondering why we're not going there and why we're not engaging the people who are most affected by this, namely our students and our people who are on the ground in buildings.
So I think we're just responding to the data and the strategic plan. So the district code team is just that. So I put this slide up in phase one with engaging schools. We will have a district task force team that includes those people that you just mentioned.
So, so
Go ahead.
Here's my concern, I've been on this school board for fourteen years. And I've seen the data every year for fourteen years. We know what the problems are and we keep hiring systems that are supposed to solve it. And that's where we got into single school culture, MTSS, we trained people, we spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars on contractors that we then finally invite some other people in to talk about and we keep ending up where we are. My concern is that yes, there is a huge problem. And, but I read through what we got sent and I can tell you today, I don't need to spend three hundred thousand dollars to tell you that we need a restorative justice program in every single school. I, I, we need to be teaching children conflict resolution very early on. But we also need to be working with our staff on that. And I guess when we say develop a district task force team, I'm concerned that at the very beginning, there was a group put together of all, only highest level employees to decide about hiring another vendor. So that's my concern.
Yes ma'am. I understand.
Dr. Pratt, can I make one comment? One thing that's really important, if, if we asked ourselves, why hasn't the data changed then? We're going to boil down to pockets of implementation of some things that might have worked, but no system that is carefully monitored and strongly executed across the entire system, school by school with support for teachers with, I mean, you can't just say, we're going to say. I, I am completely opposed to suspension, but we have to provide alternatives and ways for, for, for students to, you know, what are the alternative things we can do in our schools? And so I will tell you, there are so many districts that fail at this. They look at their data disparities, they do it, they look at it every year, they say there's a problem and then the change doesn't happen. And I tell you, it is about execution. It is about this, this group comes in and it's a complete comprehensive system. It is not a restorative practice training this day and then hope it sticks. It's not an implicit bias training this time, it is a complete system in bringing all the other pieces together. When I looked at their, when this came to me and I looked at their website, I can tell you, I bet they're probably a sole source provider because there are not many companies that do this work at this level of the, of system, from a high system all the way down into the trenches with teachers. Because one of the things they'll do in one of their phases is work directly with schools. And I will tell you, sometimes it does help to bring an external group that can call out the same things and do it in a way that people will listen. So I, I promise you, like, I really have not, this is to me what's going to be the game changer where we actually will make the changes. It will not happen without school leaders, students, families, board, community, everyone being on board. We'll still continue pieces like with restorative, triad restorative practice with our SRO program. There are still pieces, we'll continue. But this will help us create an entire system that's executed at the highest level with the right supports for our faculties and, and our teachers. So I, I just wanted to make sure I commented on that.
And thank you so much for that. And I know that, I know that you are all incredibly thoughtful people and I know that we want to do something. Do you have results from this group? What happens, the changes in the discipline data for the districts they've worked with?
Yes, and so some of that was shared in the board material. But, you know, I can't quote it off the top of my head up here, but if you need to have any additional information, I can forward it to you. But great outcomes in reducing suspensions of students and also just reducing the But great outcomes in reducing suspensions of students and also just reducing the disproportionality that we're trying to address within this district. It's really providing us a common language, a common understanding, a common belief around an issue that we need to address as a community. And this is why I really like this company, because they bring in the community to help us problem-solve and generate solutions of how we can make our school environments better for kids. And it's all-inclusive. So it's just not a code of conduct. It's professional development. It's exposing us to the research. It's going to help us monitor it and really help us do right by, by students that are, that will not meet their needs.
Okay. I, I would love to see actual numbers
Yes.
in terms of numbers changing in districts, that this is the number of kids who were suspended, and this is the disproportionality, and after working with them, what those numbers are. So I'm just going to make that request. I did want to call on Ms. Calvert-Hayes.
Thank, thank you, Elizabeth. You kind of stole my thunder, because I had some questions that, that you asked that I'm glad that you, that you did ask. But I just wondered, you know, as far as what we've been doing versus what we're doing now, the difference, and also, are we going to include the parents? And is there going to be like meetings for the parents to be able to talk with you also? And another thing that I've often wondered about, I wonder, do we ever have a psychiatrist, not a psychologist, but a psychiatrist, to come in and be able to talk to these kids also and maybe dwell into some of the problems that these kids are going through?
Yeah. So I think this is what this process is about, having opportunities like that to engage a variety of stakeholders to really come up with some great solutions and the buy-in, because I think it's important that as a community, whatever we create and whatever we execute, that we bought, supported, and we buy into it to help our most fragile kids around discipline disproportionality.
I, I hope that we will reach out, you know, more to a psychiatrist.
We will.
And be able to let these kids know that they're not the only ones having these problems, but to just be able to sit down and talk to someone that can really help them, that deals with child psychology.
Yes, ma'am. We'll make sure someone's on the team from that area.
Thank you.
I have a question about the other school districts that they have worked with. And I really can't get the information from the, the links that were given, because I know Chapel Hill and Carboro does not mirror us very well from a, from a, well, from lots of standpoints. But, and I can't tell how many African-American students, because obviously that's where our issue is, that we're disproportionality there. I, I look at Free and Reduced Lunch, and it looks like they have a lot of immigrants from one. But what, which do you have data to share with us of a district that mirrors us fairly closely? From an economic standpoint, from African-American, from Latino, from all, you know, from aspects that they have worked with that they would have some results from?
I wouldn't say we have a district that mirrors us, but I would say that those districts that's listed in the, in the, in the board information have a, a, a issue with disproportionality, a disparity with suspensions. So you mentioned Chapel Hill, even though they don't mirror us, but they are struggling with their African-American students and their Hispanic students being suspended, just like our students are. And what best practice works for Chapel Hill, Carboro, and us, probably will need, we, we can implement those here to help us solve a common problem around this disproportionality. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, it's not necessarily a district that mirrors us. It's, it's the disproportionality of the suspensions that we need to look at and what strategies that they're using to reduce that.
Dr. Pratt, these, these disproportionalsities, they're not sort of, they're not only kind of siloed in a few districts here and there. This is a...
National.
Right. And in every, kind of every single, no matter what the sort of racial, ethnic makeup of your district is, those disproportionalsities just, they tend to just exist, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is a national issue, so, and it's something that not many districts are willing to take on. I, I think you can look back at the data from the 1970s, when there was a movement in the United States around drugs and, you know, with Ronald Reagan and his administration, that it's no second chances, right? Once you get caught for something, you are to receive the maximum consequences for that, for breaking that law. That spilled over into school systems. And when students broke a rule, they got the maximum consequences. And so this is something that's been going on for many, many years in our country and that we need to pay attention to and put the appropriate things in place to address them.
So it, and this is just, this is my last question. So it sounds to me like, so the problem is systemic,
Yes.
which then would require us, sort of, for a systemic issue, you need sort of a systemic outcome.
Yes.
Which would answer, which would kind of supplement the superintendent saying earlier that the sort of piecemeal things don't ever work, because the problem is just so entrenched.
And that's why you saw us up here, and it started at the district level, because nothing we do will be effective at the school level if we're not on one accord at the district level. And so it's important for us to collaborate around this issue to make sure, before we even address this as a district, that we're all on the same page and that we understand our problem and we understand what we're planning to do as next steps. And so this is why we are having this conversation and having some tough conversation around black and brown kids in our district and how we can support them better as a school system. And so once we get on the same page, then we'll trickle it down to principals, families, students, board members, to engage them in the same kind of process that we're talking about at the district level. But we want to have that coherence here before we go anywhere else.
Thank you.
Are there any, I, I would like to say that what I'm hearing from the board is absolute, complete agreement that this is a problem, and it's a problem that needs addressing. I, I don't hear anybody on the board who is not concerned about this and is not agreeing that we need to come up with a way of dealing with it. I, and, you know, this may be really wonderful. My concern, I'm looking at the data we got. I'm seeing basically one-year data in one high school, and then what, you know, a little less clear about Syracuse. And my question would be, if I were to go look at Syracuse, that, that school district right now, would I find that there's been a long-term change in the culture in the district? If I went to, and Ms. Parker's point was very well taken, that both Orange County and Chapel Hill have a very different population than we do. They're much wealthier counties, and they, they actually don't have many of the same concerns we have right here in Forsyth County. So I would love to see more data on what actually has happened. And I'm not, I'm, I hope that this group really can make a huge difference. I don't think anybody doesn't want this to get significantly better in our district.
Understood. We'll, we'll get that data for you.
Are there any other questions from anyone on the board?
So Board Member Mottzinger, I, this is Dana. I, I had a, yeah, I, I mean, I was definitely, I'm not going to go back through things other board members have said, because obviously, I think this, you know, definitely staff feels like this is a, a step in the right direction to try to correct something that we've seen in the data for years and years, as we've, as we have said. So my question's not really around, around this, and I, and I appreciate the questions of other board members, because I think they did bring up, like, how, how could we see some of that data and that, that change? And then also bringing people in, and I understand that you can't bring everybody to the table at once. Sometimes you have to limit buffet, and then you kind of bring everybody else in, and I appreciate that. I, I really had a question around, just so that we understand and that we're transparent to the public around, tonight we have awarded kind of contracts without having RFPs, and then we've seen some from HR that had an RFP. And so I guess my, some of my questions probably to Deion is that, can you help us understand when an RFP is needed? Is there a dollar amount that goes to that? Or, or help us understand that so that our, we can educate ourselves and our public as to what's, what's the difference?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And I think the process is different depending upon the source of funds that are utilized. And so for federal funds, there's a federal procurement practice that requires RFPs to be issued based on dollar amount. But for, for state dollars, it's based on the, the actual goods or services. And so under state law, it's, it's purchases of goods and supplies and certain apparatus and materials that are required to be bid if they meet a certain threshold monetarily, but not for services.
And so...
So that's where, so we were using, so tonight in the HR contract, we are using some of the dollars that, for, to go, so that's going to be paid for, for federal dollars. And so therefore, it wasn't so much about the 1.4, the amount of the contract. It was more that it was federal dollars that we're, we were using, and so that was required.
Yes, ma'am.
And so in this case, we're using...
I, I'm not sure the source of funds for this... At risk.
At risk dollars, and so therefore...
Their state dollars.
Their state dollars, and they don't have to do it. Okay, great. I mean, and, and I'm not saying, I'm not bringing that up at this point to question the contract. I'm, I'm fine with that. But I just know that there are differences, and we just saw that tonight. And I thought, even coming up next, it would be great to just make sure that we all are aware of why.
Yes. And I know sometimes, you know, depending upon the, the need for the contract or the, the project that's being proposed, even though it may not necessarily be legally required, you know, it may be recommended to use an RFP process, especially if it's an initiative for which there's not a lot of resources that are already available. And, and so I know for some of the examples that have been proposed, not only just today, but in previous instances, there were plenty of, there were lots of vendors for which, that are providing a service, for which you can do some kind of informal research and background on. You can reach out to other districts. You can get feedback, et cetera. And so you, you almost do more of an informal RFP process, whereas if it's a, a service or a vendor of, you know, of which you do not have much information, it, it may be more beneficial in that case to go through a more formal RFP process.
Thank you, Deion.
You're welcome. But I didn't know if there were, were there any other questions about Dr. Pratt before I just jumped in?
Okay.
Okay. Well, good evening again, board members, Policy Chair Mottzinger and Superintendent McManus. I wanted to provide you all a very brief update about the initiation of our Staff Policy Committee. I am excited about this, because this has been on my personal to-do list for quite some time. It's an initiative that I wanted to get started before COVID, but then COVID kind of took precedence over, over this project. But we have started meeting, we've actually had two meetings with our Staff Policy Committee that is comprised of myself, now Dr. Effie McMillan, Nicolette Grant, Brenda Born, Lauren Richards, and Donna Cannon. And the purpose of this committee is to really start doing, start a comprehensive review of our, of your board policy manual. And so we have over 300 policies and ARs in our board policy manual, some of which have not been reviewed or revised since the 70s. And so the goal of this committee is to, to conduct a comprehensive review. And as, we listed in the initial agenda materials, kind of the first set of policies that we're going through. I know that Policy 5123, Ms. Grant is, will, will be coming back to you pretty soon. It's the one for promotion and retention, as well as some other policies that are in the 5,000 section. Given the recent direction that we've taken with some of the curriculum materials and the textbook adoption, we thought it made sense to start with the 5,000 section as well as the 6,000 section. So that's a student section and an instruction section. But over the course of the next few years, we will be taking subsets of the policy manual, reviewing them, and when necessary, bringing revisions back to you all for approval. And the process that we're utilizing is, we have policies that we've developed, that we've listed for review. We'll get stakeholder input where necessary, and then ultimately, when we have a final proposed revised policy, bring that to the Board Policy Committee for review and approval. So one, I wanted to note two things that are not currently listed here. One was the code of conduct, which you just heard the presentation from Dr. Pratt. That review is taking place kind of parallel to the Staff Policy Committee process. And then number two is, we have convened a group of individuals together comprised of Corliss Thompson-Drew, Deborah Harris, and, and several other folks to review and develop a mental, a mental health plan, which we, you'll hear more about later. That's a requirement that the State Board has imposed upon districts across the state to submit a school, a school mental health plan, and there may be a policy that arises out of that as well. So I wanted to just make you aware of those two other items that are not currently on the list. And so with that, I will, I will yield the floor to the board for any questions that you may have, as well as I would welcome any feedback from you all about policies that you specifically would like to see revisited or revised in the near future.
Would you like us to send those to you via email?
Sure. You can either tell me now, or you can email me.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thank you, Ms. Jenkins. And anybody who has suggestions will follow Mr. Bohannon's recommendation and email those to Ms. Jenkins. We have one action item, and again, who's on Policy Committee is Alex Bohannon, Marilyn Parker, Deanna Kaplan, Andrea Braemer, and myself. And what's on is a Consider Approval of District Code of Character Conduct and Support Engaging Schools contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And so your motion is to approve the code of conduct. Yes. And is there a second? I can't see.
Second, second.
Is there a second?
Yes, Ms. Parker.
Okay, and that was Ms. Parker. So all in favor, please say aye. Or whose hands are raised, because I can't see.
Alex and, and Marilyn.
Alex and Marilyn. So that, that didn't pass. Is there any other motion?
This is Board Member Kaplan. I, I really agree with Superintendent. We need to take a look at this, and we need to move forward. I would just like to make a motion just to have a little bit more time for some more data, just so that I can make a really good decision on this, that possibly we could even move this to the next board meeting for action.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You have three hands here.
So can I get, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, Ms. Mottzinger, but I just want to clarify. Are you making a motion to table it or to move?
Yes, yes, to table it and move it.
I'm sorry.
I guess.
Let me, can I clarify, Ms. Kaplan? Are you looking
Yes.
to table the item, or are you looking to put it on the next agenda with the request for information?
That, that is what, that's correct, to, to move it.
So I have a quick part, point of parliamentary inquiry. So if the, the passing of the previous motion, that would have put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. So I guess the difference between that motion is that you just want to make sure we have that extra data at that, right? That's what it is? Okay. All right. Just want to make sure.
So that, so it is to move it to the next meeting, but with a request for additional information. Is there?
The next meeting?
The, the, is it the next committee meeting or the full board meeting on the 27th?
I thought it was committee.
Okay, committee. Yeah.
Okay. So that would be the, the May work session.
So have we already voted on that? I'm, well, and the reason why is because if, if that is, I would vote against it if that was the, my understanding was that it would... was the, my understanding was that it would be for the full board.
For the board meeting?
Yeah.
Well, it seems there is an urgency to get this moving and I certainly agree with Superintendent about that. I just wanted to get some more data, just to be able to make a really good decision.
It's, is it?
The next committee meeting.
So, well, here's a, here's a, something for consideration. If it comes up at the full board meeting, it can, we have two choices. One choice is that we get the information we asked for tonight in email and opportunity to call Dr. Pratt or Ms. McMillan or whomever we feel the need to discuss with and have it on the agenda for the full board meeting. And that will have given all committee members a chance to have seen the information we asked for. The other option is to defer it to the next work session and then have a full board vote on it in a month. But it sounds like what we're really asking, if I'm correct, and I might be wrong, but I'm trying to make sure, what I'm hearing is that people feel, they understand the urgency, they would like to support it, but they'd like information first so that it can go forward.
I agree, Elizabeth, that's what we were trying to say. But I was thinking of your questions in saying, you know, how many students in Syracuse? And some of that data may take time to gather.
So, can I ask Dr. Pratt, do you think that you can get the information to us in a timely manner so that we could vote on it at the full board meeting in two weeks?
I'm responding for him. He's nodding his head, yes.
Sounds great to me.
Okay. So, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Is, is your motion that we get the information before the full, at least 72 hours before the full board meeting?
Yes.
So that we can vote on it?
That would be my motion, yes.
I'll give you a second.
Okay. All in favor of this substitute motion?
Aye.
Okay. And I can't count hands.
It appears to be unanimous.
Without your vote, Elizabeth, I think it was everybody else.
Yes. All right. So, it is unanimous. Thank you. And now, back to our chair for new business.
Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer. The next item on our agenda is new business. We have two discussion items and one action item. First, we have the county request for educational lottery funds by Darrell Walker, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. I think we can be pretty brief on this. This is kind of the annual request from the county commissioners, just so the general public or any folks that are new to this, is that there was an agreement that the bond funds that were, that were sent to the county or sent to the school district would revert back to the county to pay down the bond debt to prevent increase, a larger increase in taxes to the taxpayer. So, this is a good thing, good partnership with the county. They make an annual request. This is an anticipated amount that they get from the county, so it typically runs anywhere in the three to four million dollar range each year. And so, they're making their annual request. Just so you know, a lot of counties utilize these funds for capital dollars. We're very fortunate that they give us capital funds on top of collecting this money. So, it kind of washes itself out and in fact, we come out on the better end of it. But at the end of the day, this is their annual request to collect bond funds to, I mean lottery funds to pay down bond debt. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Trish McManus, our Superintendent for a school reopening update.
Thank you. This will be pretty quick because I know I was just up here a couple of weeks ago, just so you know. So, yesterday was Monday, right? Yes, Monday. Well, we had our folks that were in four cohorts went to two. Things went well in our schools based on that. And so, where we are today, these are again, are just numbers that we have collected from our attendance data. And so, next Monday, as you know, we will start with all students that choose to go back to four days a week. We are, some, a couple of things to update you on. We are going to adjust our quarantine period. We will be reducing the number of days required from 14 to 10. So, Jennifer Corso has been working with the Health Department and, and the, our contact tracing team and all of that information, if it hasn't already, will be going out so people know that. And it starts as of April 5th. So, anyone as of April 5th and beyond would get the 10 days of quarantine. Symptom screening, we've heard a lot about symptom screening and when I was up here last time, there is no requirement anymore of symptom screening. And actually, our, the Health Department in conversations with them, they actually feel that we should put an end to it, that it is not, actually not, you know, I guess we keep learning, but it's not a very effective mitigation strategy. So, tomorrow we're going to, and I have not, this was all conversations actually yesterday and talked about it this morning on a bi-weekly call with some of the commissioners, some of the mayors. It's called reopen Forsyth. And so, some of this just came up. So, tomorrow we'll talk to our principals in principal meeting to talk through this and we'll move forward with a recommendation to, I mean, a lot of folks have asked us to make a change on this, but I'm not, we're not doing it as of Monday yet until we meet with principals, talk about what this will look like, allow Darrell a chance to get the word out. It would definitely help with traffic lines, but we also would need to hold our community very accountable to, again, keeping kids home that have any kind of symptoms. So, and younger students now are getting COVID more. It was older ones before. I want to say one more thing that's not in the presentation, and that is the vaccine is open now for 16-year-olds and up. And when Joshua Swift shared the data today on the call of the number of open appointments that they have for vaccines, it is, it is hundreds and hundreds a day of no one getting vaccines with the open appointments. So, I, I mean, again, everyone has to make a choice, personal choice, and this is no, but I hope a lot of our students, 16 to older, the younger students will be coming later, but I'm hoping that folks start to take advantage of that. The Health Department has asked us to send out information to families and so Brent's working on that as well, to get information about these vaccine clinics to families. Air quality, this is an update because this was something we said and at this point, there are literally three schools left. We said they would be done by, I think, Monday and we're almost there. Reagan and Philo will be completed this week and then Career Center as of Monday. So, we're almost there with our air quality. Transportation, current stop requests are up to date and Kennedy and Atkins, and we mentioned that the last time we were here, that that is, those are the only two schools that have no residential students. So, we're working on routing for those students. And again, we're going to continue with transportation. I have some slides for the future that I think will relieve our community about transportation. Flexible dining, we do have varying models. I'm seeing more and more students eating outside, some are eating inside and so, but they're, schools are handling that very creatively. Next week with our high schools and our larger middle schools, we'll be, all of staff will be out there in the field and we'll be able to come back then and provide some updates at the next meeting after that. Some milestones and lessons learned. I will tell you, and this is just a beginning phase of this, we're going to be continuing to come back because there's more and more that we're finding that we've done. And I will tell you, there's more and more lessons that we're learning about things we can do differently in education. We've kind of been so like the same for so long and so we're learning some things that we're going to be able to do different down the road. So, I'll be bringing those things to you over time, but I just wanted you to have some of our numbers that we're really excited about, that have been from the beginning of the year. The one that today, when I looked at it, I was like, oh my gosh, either we're making parents crazy or we're doing a really good job with 8,900 contacts out. But I'm just kidding, Brent. Anyway, we ate to parents every day. These are the amount of calls that we're, and calls and messages and things that we're getting out to families. Also, technology, Kevin talked a little bit about this earlier. 38,500 Chromebooks were administered this year. Some students, remember, had their own and so if they didn't need one, they didn't. But that's a lot of Chromebooks to go out, the 12 Wi-Fi buses, you know? These are all things, if you look at all the nutrition, breakfast and lunches and vans, there's been a lot of great work done this year by so many staff from school buildings with teachers and teacher assistants and every employee in our school buildings to district staff across the system. And we need to start celebrating some of that because it has been some great work. Summer, yes, it has been. I tell you, and just listening to the staff come up today for everything, I'm like, God, we have a great team. Lucky. So, hands-on summer. So, just so you know about summer, Nicolette mentioned summer. You know, the program has to be 150 hours. Teachers that sign up are going to be able to get some incentive or bonus pay and so a lot more is going to be coming out very soon. So, parents and everyone that might be listening, there are so many opportunities that every kid can find something that they would like this summer if they want to be learning. Some of the learning, according to the state, because this has been legislated, the summer program, is supposed to be in person and there are very specific guidelines with who and what and all of, I mean, very specific guidelines. So, more and more is going to be coming out. But wait, there's more. Here's another programs, Seeds of Hope and CTE programs, Rise. There is so much for our students this summer. We want it to feel exciting for students and that summer is just going to be a continuation of their learning. And yes, our goal is to get any student that is struggling academically, is behind, is below level, that they come to this summer program. But then also, if there are students that just want to come for social interaction, for SEL, SEL is built out, extracurricular is built out, you know, we are going to have our doors open this summer. Common denominators of our summer programs, you can see everything there. We are still, yes, following all safety protocols. So, our classrooms will be set up, our buildings will be structured in a way that we still use safety protocols. You can see we're really going to focus on hands-on, connecting with families, and a lot of progress monitoring of our students. We don't want to have them in five or six weeks of school, 150 hours and not really, and it's going to cost millions and not really see the progress that students are making before they go into the fall. So, we're going to be doing some really close monitoring. And then fall 2021, I know people have asked about this and I have stated it before, but there will be two options for the fall and that is in-person instruction, the five days a week, or virtual academy, which I believe that deadline, has that deadline passed for the registration of virtual academy? I think it has. But if anybody, I will tell you, we also always want our families to be safe. So, parents, you know, work through your schools if you have any questions about that or through your, through your area, area superintendent or team. But yep, so that's next year. And our goal is in the fall, you know, transportation will be back to normal. That is our goal for August. That attestation forms will be used for screening, which once again means, please keep anyone that doesn't feel good home. Please, 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 please. And then districts, we are going to continue contact tracing. We are going to continue our quarantine guidelines going into the fall. We are going to continue our CARES teamwork going into the fall. We feel we need another, another year of that work of really getting out into our communities through our CARES teams. So, that's a very quick update where we are and I'll come back regularly to provide those. So, any questions? All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have one action item to Consider Approval of the Education Lottery Funds for Payment of the 2013, 2015 and 10e bond debt service.
Second.
If there are no further questions or discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Ms. Braemer, did you?
Yes.
Raise your hand? Okay, thank you, so that motion passes. We do have a couple of announcements. The week of April 5th through the 9th is Assistant Principal Appreciation Week and I will say they are the saints of lockers and discipline. So, we thank them for their sainthood, right? Friday, April the 16th, the board will have finance training, which is to continue to empower our board to work alongside our superintendent and CFO so that we can continue to have great audits. And then we have Tuesday, April the 27th, of course, our regular meeting of the board. I would like to say on behalf of the board, congratulations to Val Young for becoming once again the President of FCAE. And also, Ms. Rhonda Mays is the new Treasurer of FCAE. And last but not least, we want to congratulate Dr. Effie McMillan, who have just earned her doctorate and who have helped us to move down the path of equity in our district. So, we want to thank and support her. With that being said, this ends our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. There are no further questions or discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.